I'm Brian Sullivan, the Chair of the Howard Appeals Board. And I'd like to first start with an opening statement, if I might. Welcome to the meeting of the Howard Board of Appeals on this date, April 26. The purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications before the Board of Appeals, which have been brought pursuant to the bylaw of the town of Howard in the Massachusetts Zoning Enabling Act. As required by law, the town may audio and video record this meeting, which we are. Any person intending to either audio or video record the open session is required to inform the Chair. During the meeting, the Chair will recognize promptly a member of the Board, the Secretary, attorneys presenting their case, to inform the Chair if a protocol is not being properly followed. You will, anyone during the open sessions, they'll be conductive for each case. Those wishing to speak during the open discussion can do so at the podium. And there is a sign up sheet there just to list your name and address. Okay? Of course, those who are presenting their case don't need to do that. All right. I'd like to ask the Board to identify themselves.
John August.
Chris Murphy.
Alexander Donahue.
Brian Sullivan.
Dave Ryer.
David Nunley.
Kenneth Dixon.
Okay. So let's proceed and I'd like to have the clerk call the first case.
The first case is 2023-05 Round Cove Resort Owner LLC at Four Cove Landing Road. Also on Route, Route number 2173 of Route 28, also Two Swan Drive. The applicant is seeking a special permit in pre-existing non-conforming amenities coverage and to increase and allow use by more than 7,500 square feet in gross floor area pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw 32554, Mass. General Law 40A, Section 6. There has been a request by the attorney, Marion Rose, who represents Round Cove, and she's looking for a continuance to another date.
Okay. And prior to discussing that, Dave, you want to?
Yes, I've got a couple of comments. She's asking for a continuance because at the planning board meeting, which was on the 25th, April 25th, 2023, different points were raised by the abutter's counsel and the planning board has requested an opinion from town council. I think we need the Board of Appeals an opinion for town, from town council on the following questions, and I'll give these to you after I read them off. Can the Board of Appeals grant a special permit in this case? And if so, under what provisions of the bylaw? She's, the abutter's attorney is claiming we don't have the authority to do that, power to do that. Two, can the Board of Appeal grant a variance in this case, assuming the applicant amends its application to request this form of relief and then meets the statutory requirements for relief? Three, will the applicant have to amend the application to seek a variance since it will be asking for a higher form of relief than a special permit? And four, will an amended application seeking a variance have to be re-advertized?
Okay.
So I think we need to find out what authority this board has in light of the issues that were raised. Now, you could certainly talk to the planning board people and see, I don't know what they've raised, it wasn't up on YouTube when I looked. But I think we need our own opinion as to what authority we have in this case.
Well, I, I agree. And as I read the documentation that, from that, that we got from that meeting, I also today, so you know, I had a brief, a brief discussion with the planning director and regarding the fact that the zoning board, you know, would probably want to get involved and we did discuss that this night. And basically, they're not quite sure how they're going to proceed. They are going to request the town council's opinion. Their first will be perhaps meeting to propose, to get together as to what the points are. They haven't done that yet, as you have already done here. And I ask to be a part of that discussion or members of the board who want to attend be part of that discussion with the planning board. So it, all right?
That would make sense to get one opinion covering both the planning board's authority in this case and our authority.
Right. So that was my, again, it was a unscheduled meeting, but we had, I had that in view of this, I wanted to see him, I thought it might come up and we thought we'd have, we'd have a discussion, we'd gotten our own points. So he agreed, take a look at it, and then we'll form that, you know, final letter. But I think I'll, I'll take this and, and what I'll do is, Dave, I'll, I'll draft this up and send it to you and the board a copy. So I'd like to, you know, make a motion as.
Well, I've got an additional point.
Sure.
Okay, looking at this, and it's unfortunate the council isn't here, but this is something I think you'll have to have, we should go back to her on, to Attorney Rose. Attorney Rose filed two notices of appeal application, one dated February 22, 2023, the other dated March 6, 2023. And she signed off on both. And in both, the properties are listed as being located in the CH-2 zone, zoning district. And this is not a net, it's important because motels, hotels are not permitted in CH2. Now, in the narrative, and I believe in the, the abutter's counsel's petition, they say the properties are in the RH2 zone. And there, motels and hotels, I have to look back at, it's got three different definitions.
By permit?
They're permitted by special permit.
Right.
I think, since that's a substantive issue, we should have Attorney Rose clarify that and file a correct application. Because she's now said twice that it's located in the CH2 zone. And I'm sure it's a technical issue, but.
Yeah, no.
Given the opposition, I think this should be corrected for the record.
It's, this, this case is going to go under a lot of scrutiny and we've got to be accurate.
Yes.
Okay.
So I would recommend that we should just contact her and advise her of that. It probably was just a typing oversight, but it's in the record, so it should be corrected.
Okay.
That's all I have.
So based upon Dave's, Mr. Ryer's comments and, and what he read for requesting an opinion of counsel, I'm just going to make a motion to the fact that the Board authorized the Chair to seek council's opinion regarding these items as, as outlined by Dave and anything else we think that the Board, or myself personally, think will come up that the attorney needs to be questioned on.
I was looking at that motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. So as, let me just find it here, folks. Okay, now what do I do with it? So as the clerk, as Al pointed out, a request for continuance has been made. I have an agreement, and I'll read it, you know, to the Board of Appeals. I, Marion Ross, attorney, representative for the petitioner in the above matter, which is this case, case number 2023-05, or 2173 Route 28, Howard. Hereby agreed that the time for holding a public hearing and rendering a decision in the above matter may be extended up through and including that date, which is 180 days after date this agreement is asserted, assented to by the Board. And these, and, and by these presents thereby waive the time limits for the same, same provided in MGL Chapter 48. So basically, at this point, this case has 180 days to come back in front of the Board before we have to discuss any more further continuances. So I'm going to take a motion and we have the Chair approve this. Second, okay? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I should say motion carries, but I'm. Okay.
Should, before we go on, we just continued it, but not to any specific meeting. Do we need to continue it to our next meeting and then if they're not ready, continue it again? I, I don't know the answer to that.
I.
That's normally what we've done.
We certainly can do that. So let's indicate the fact where, for right now, we're continuing to the next meeting. That way, it will be listed first, should they, they go to the meeting. Otherwise, they may not be.
Yeah, I mean, I'd recommend we do it that way, so, yeah.
So, so this is continued to our May meeting. Let's see, okay, right now, what it is?
Oh, when is it, May?
Be the 31st.
No, I'm, I'll read it in. All right, case number 2023-05 Round Cove Resort Owner LLC and Four Cove Landing Road, being represented by Marion Rose Esquire. Property is located at 2173 Route 28, Four Cove Landing and Two Swan Drive. This case will be continued to May 21st, 2000, excuse me, 31st, 2023.
Okay, Al, the clerk called the next case?
All right, next case is 2023-08 Dakota J., now I don't want to crucify that name with counsel, my.
Caparreli Otis.
Caparreli Otis. All of the property located 19 Cranberry Lane, Assessors Map 41, parcel T15, the RM zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit to convert a garage to a habitable space on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw 32554, MGL Chapter 48, Section 6.
The only relevant document received back from the departments was from the Health Department that just indicated the fact that this facility, this, this site's already approved for, for three bedrooms on the septic system. So there were no issues from the, the Health Department, Board of Health, nor any other departments in town. I'd like to assign voting on the case. And this would be Al Donahue, Dave Nunley, Chris Murphy, David Ryer, and John August. I'd like to ask the applicant and the representative to introduce themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney William Crowell from Howard Port, here this evening for Dakota Caparreli Otis, who had to be, she and her husband had to be away this evening, and he asked me to stand in. Just a heads up from the planning board meeting last night, there was also the first case that, last night, also was seeking, went on for an hour and seeking an opinion from town council on that case as to whether they should be in front of the planning board or in front of the Board of Appeals. So you might want to bring that up with the town planner, because that may be coming your way also.
Over the years, we've had a number of cases come before us where this board discussed where it should be. You might have been involved with some, I, I don't remember now, but under the bylaw, a lot of times it's unclear whether it should be in the planning board's jurisdiction or the Board of Appeals.
That's the threshold question, and they spent a lot of time on that.
Yes.
As did the Quasic case, same thing.
Well, thank you for the heads up. Appreciate it.
Okay. So this property is located on, at 19 Cranberry Lane, which is off of Lover's Lane in Howard's Center, over by Paddock Pond, as shown on the Assessors Map of the town. And my client filed this petition on her own. She submitted a very nice succinct narrative. I'm thinking of hiring her to sub out some of the work, including, "We are expecting our second child this July and we need this additional bedroom." From this attached garage, it's attached, so it's a pre-existing non-conforming structure, which as you can see on the plot plan by TS Land Surveying is 11.3, 11.1 feet from the boundary line, the south westerly boundary line. And they want to convert that garage to habitable space, and that's within the 20-foot setback. So this is a Gale case situation, this is a Howard's bylaw situation where you are creating additional habitable space. And that's a special permit under our bylaw, and the Gale case, it's a special permit as well, because they're intensifying the existing non-conformity by converting it from garage space, non-habitable, to habitable space. And I think it's, fits very well within the, our bylaw requirements and the Gale case conditions. So there's a, a simple plot plan because we're not changing the footprint. So there's no, you don't need existing conditions and proposed conditions. And there's a equally simple floor plan that shows the nice new master bedroom that would go in the garage space. The building commissioner issued a denial letter on February 24. And the argument is that, for the special permit, it is that there would be no substantial increase in noise, odors, fumes, congestion, traffic, or the like. It would not create a nuisance, and there would be no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay. All right, questions, by the Board? Signing with John?
I don't have any questions. Please take it forward.
I have no questions. I have no questions.
Ken?
I don't think I'm a voting, but I have.
Oh, no, no, yeah, when you're, even though you're not voting, you still can participate fully in the meeting regarding questions and comments.
No questions.
Okay.
I'll just point out for anyone who wasn't here last month, the Board has historically looked at a garage that's attached to the house as an integral part of the house, and therefore it falls under the special permit reviews of 32554. A detached garage, on the other hand, is another structure than, different than a one or two-family house, and that requires a variance. So historically, this board has taken the position where it's attached, it's an integral part of the structure, and yes, it's part of a one-family house, and therefore a special permit would be the appropriate form of relief. I agree with Attorney Crowell, I think this does meet the requirements of both the Gale and Deirdre cases and the bylaw, merely intensifying an existing non-conformity, not adding any new one, certainly, in my opinion, no more, not substantially more detrimental to neighborhood than the existing structures. I, I think the only condition we need, they have plenty of parking, is just to, to require the construction vehicles to park on-site during the project.
Sure.
It's going to be mainly inside construction, from what I can tell. I mean, there will be some minimal outside, but it shouldn't be a problem. That's all I have.
Ken, this is excellent review. Uh, thanks, thank you, Dave. Actually, I don't have any questions myself at this point. Would I like to open up the meeting to anyone in the audience that wants to make comments about it? Okay. Hearing none. Actually, I should have been opening a public meeting, I apologize. So let's, I'd like to open a public meeting, there's no one who wants to speak.
I'll move to close the public meeting.
Can I have a second to close the public meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any other comments, questions for the Board, for the Board? Okay. I'd like to hear a motion on the case, for the court.
Case number 2023-08 Dakota J., Caparreli Otis, owner of the property at 19 Cranberry Lane, Assessors Map 41, parcel T15, in the RM zoning district, has been provided with a special permit to convert a garage habitable, to habitable space and pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling. The case meets the Gale conditions. The project will not intensify, one or more existing non-conformities will not create a new non-conformity, and will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structures. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with this application. The spec, the special permit is granted as subsequent to the following conditions. The, during the life of, there'll be no, no, we're going to go through that one. During the life of the project, all construction vehicles shall be parked on the property and not on any public street or road. It is a condition of this approval that the violation of the terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 7, Howard zoning bylaws, as these may be amended from time to time.
Can I hear a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, all those, any other, any comments on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Thank you very much. You've helped another young family in town.
You may encourage, because there aren't many of them.
There are not.
By the way, Bill, how's the, how's the knee doing, Susan?
On my eighth week of playing volleyball.
All right, super.
All good.
You're my hero. Okay. And I'd like to have the clerk call the next case?
Case number 2023-09 David and Helen H. Marsill. Care of the, David being represented by George Davis, Inc., 34, off Main Street, South Yarmouth. The property owner, the owner of the property is located 3 Corner Furwood Road, Assessors Map, 25 parcel N4 in the RM zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit or in the alternative, a variance, to construct an addition within the setback, a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw 32552 and 54, MGL Chapter 48, Section 6 and 10.
Okay. The only relevant notice that I'm aware of is from the Health Department, and they indicated a request that the permit for the relocation of the septic tank be applied for prior to the building permit sign-off.
Okay, very well, thank you.
The, going to assign voting to this, this case is Al Donahue, Brian Sullivan, David Nunley, Chris Murphy, and David Ryer. And again, just to confirm, all other members of the Board can participate fully in the discussion with questions and so forth. And I'd like to have the applicant, representative, introduce themselves.
Great, thank you very much. My name is Matthew Fitzsimmons, I'm an attorney in Yarmouth, and I represent David and Susan Marsill in their, in their petition before the Board today. As, as described, what this petition brings forward is a, is a prayer for relief from the 25-foot front yard setback. As was described in, in the opening, the property is a, is a three-bedroom, single-family dwelling in the RM zoning district. The property is otherwise conforming except for the current rear setback, as shown on the, on the plan submitted with the petition. The following review of the building permit application, the commissioner, quite savvy in his review, and actually picked up on, on the layout of the neighborhood and, and how the home sat on the lot in the paper road of Conifer Woods Road to the east. When you're looking at the plan, the driveway comes in from the south and approaches the home. And as it turns out, the, by, by layout of the original plan, of which, this home was not part of the same subdivision, and that makes it quite unique, too. When Conifer Woods Road was laid out, this lot wasn't actually part of the Conifer Woods Road layout. So what ended up happening is on, to the east, is, is Conifer Woods Road as, as, as laid out in the plans of record in the registry. And what that leads to is the right-hand side, or the easterly side of the home, ending up being treated as the front yard for setback purposes, because the frontage is in fact on paper on the eastern side. And so when the, when the plans were submitted to the commissioner, commissioner in, in review, picked up on, on the nature of that layout. So the relief and the, sort of this very unique circumstance of, of this home having been, then constructed and, and this particular lot broken out in the 1950s prior to any of the current subdivision planning, ended up plunking the home in a way that, that limits the utility of the eastern side of the home as a side yard setback, the way it actually is in, in, in feel, look, and layout in the neighborhood, given how the driveway and approach comes in from, from the south. And so in presenting the petition, we presented in the alternative, because on the one hand, we have the, the rear setback being non-conforming. And so if we treat the structure itself as non-conforming, and look at this as a, as a modification of the existing non-conforming nature, although it is on the, on the eastern side, a special permit could be warranted in any circumstances. Alternatively, in, in review of, of the layout and, and the way the, the nature of the home is cited, a variance would be quite fitting. We don't have any neighbor, we have Conifer Woods Road as a paper road, so we don't, we're not adverse to a, a neighbor on Conifer Woods Road all of a sudden creating this, this relief that would impact an immediate abutter. And so in the alternative, we look for a variance. I believe the criteria have been, have been met. We have, based on the circumstances of the shape and, and layout, it is difficult for David and Susan to look to modify their home to the west. Their septic system sits in, to the south, the, the treat area of their lot is to the left. A lot would change to the neighborhood if they were forced to start to look to expand the opposite way. And by topography and layout, naturally where they're, where they're looking to put on their addition is, is fitting based on how a septic system would lay out on the lot, in the way of all the flow of, of drains and the like, as currently, currently laid out in the home. The nature of the hardship, given the layout of the property, and the fact that we don't have an immediate abutter to the east, I feel is, is really helpful and, and can help warrant providing relief. And but for the fact that Conifer Woods Road hadn't been laid out with the type of planning and oversight that the planning board would have given this at the time, as, as a Board of Appeals, it's a real, it's a, it's, it's a real help to, to the family based on how the home is. as a, as a Board of Appeals, it's a real, it's a, it's, it's a real help to, um, to the family based on how the, um, home is cited, to be able to have that southerly approach. Still, really, in function, be treated as the, as the frontage, um, for, for, um, setback. And if it was treated as a, uh, side yard setback, um, we'd be looking at twenty feet. And as laid out, the, um, the engineer had designed it in theory, having twenty-foot setback in mind. And so the, the relief we'd be looking for is, is no more than under, under five feet. To have a twenty-point-one-foot, uh, setback in the current laid-out frontage. So with that, I've, I'm open to any questions that the board may have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, when, um, first of all, did, uh, the applicant, uh, discuss what their plans are with any of the neighbors? And get any opinions from the neighbors as far as what their yes or no and so forth? I didn't see any letters.
No, they had, there hadn't been any feedback, I hadn't received any, I can actually check George Davis, our builder, builders here, I don't think there's been any, any, any further, um, feedback or the like. They've been residents there in, um, uh, at the home a long time, so they're not new, they're not new neighbors to the neighborhood either.
Okay. In inspecting the property, I actually
Yeah.
met the neighbor who I think easement they have going across their property, who's the
Yeah.
lobster fisherman.
Okay.
And, uh, he, and I forget his name, um, he was very supportive of, of them going forward.
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention that to
Thank you.
the board and so forth, that, uh, that was not in a public meeting.
Sure.
But I did happen to, he did, uh, I did talk to him, 'cause I was, had some questions. And the, um, when was the home constructed?
It was constructed in, I think it was nineteen fifty, let's see here.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, yes, thank you.
And, and when, and when did the Conifer Woods Road, um, subdivision, and, you know, go in and this became a paper road?
This, this plan didn't go on record until nineteen eighty-five.
Now, prior to that, was there address associated with Depot Road, that, this address?
It's possible. I'd have to ask, I'd have to ask David and Su- and Susan Marsil to find out, you know.
I mean, the move of not having a Conifer Road, their address
Right.
would have been Depot, Depot Road, I'm, I'm guessing, or off Depot Road.
Yeah, either off Depot Road, I mean, it could, I'm, I was gonna take a look to see if there was anything else that might, hey, there's Schooner Drive on the opposite side, but that was, that was before, too, so.
And, and I'm assuming since nineteen fifty-eight, whatever, their access was the current dirt road, which they, so that
That's correct.
I don't believe that probably has not changed over the years.
That's correct.
Their access has never changed.
Yeah.
So when the house was originally built, it's showing frontage, though there's, they, they allowed the, they allowed the site, showing frontage of one twenty-seven twenty-nine, of course, associated with the, the access easement. And we have Conifer Woods Road, that I'm reading this correctly, only has a frontage on the road of, of fifty feet, fifty-point-nine-four feet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, it's, it, when I looked at that and looked at how they had laid out the, the plan, which was a separate land court plan for Conifer Woods Road when it was put together, it's almost as if at the time, the, those, 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 the, that neighboring developer was trying to do a favor to this lot, to have just over fifty feet of frontage. But, um, but there's no fee interest in Conifer Woods Road connected to the house, so that's the, that's the, um,
No.
sort of the interplay of it being an after-the-fact design.
So where does Conifer Road, I'm looking at this line on the, on the map, on the plan, that just starts from down here
That's right.
Conifer, and it goes across the property. Is that correct? Is it, it, the, the paper road is not actually going across their property, is it?
No, so their, their driveway, by easement access, then carries down to the road.
Okay.
By looping its way around. But Conifer Woods Road on paper is truly just on paper, it's a series of, of snaking driveways that lead to the individual homes on Conifer Woods Road.
And, um,
It's wooded immediately about it.
It's all, it's all woods.
Yeah.
And, uh, and, and actually looking at a town roadmap that's online of the state, it doesn't even show the road.
That's correct.
Okay. So you're looking for a hardship, I mean, again, I'd, when, when, in looking at this, would you redefine again the hardship for the variance that you're looking for here?
For sure, yeah. In the form of a variance, um, the hardship here is that, um, the alternatives that the family have are limited, given the current layer. We certainly wouldn't want to ask the board for any relief to the rear. It's already an un-conforming setback and wouldn't ask for any relief there. The, um, layout of the home and the way the, 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 the topography lends itself for the installation of the septic system, the current tree nature of the home to the, to the west and to the south, it, it would change the neighborhood more to have that be the approach for any expansion of the home. The way the dwelling is cited, um, the right-hand side of this easterly bound is the most naturally, um, laid out for having their, their additional space for the kitchen and bath and, and, and the like that they're looking to put in in family rooms. Um, the, I think what the hardship, too, is by setting an example of not, um, providing relief on the eastern bound, then raises the same question about almost treating this as a corner lot, when it would never be intended to be a corner lot. And then we end up with, with, with frontage on two sides, um, by function. And so, uh, the, um, uh, you know, there's also, there's also no, no undue, um, burden either to the neighbors, particularly where we have Conifer Woods Road as a paper road being treed and without any immediate a butter on that side.
Okay, it, um,
Yeah.
The other thing which I had looked at, again, this is a personal opinion, not boards', is that at some point nineteen fifty-eight, Towne Howard said, "Go ahead and build this house here, and we're allowing you to have frontage on an easement," which isn't typically what's, I don't believe is allowed in the, in the, in the zoning codes. But it was allowed then.
Right.
So it's, it's already, that excel, except, that excel, itself is a, almost like a, a non-conformity that was allowed. And then, without their, without their involvement, here comes Conifer Wood Road. And I'm, I also look at the, look at it as a possible hardship, the fact that this road shows up thirty years, almost thirty years after the house got built, and their address and frontage got changed without their, without the, their involvement.
That's correct.
And I kind of look at that as a hardship as well. I mean, that's just, so I don't, you know, so I'm just throwing that out and just making my comments to the board. So I think I've, at the moment, doing my questions, and I'll start with John.
No questions. Yeah, for a special permit, if, if you want to do it, say the front is where, where it's supposed to be based on, uh, the, the building.
Right.
Uh, you're, you're creating a non-conformance, by, by saying, "That's the front, it was thirty-one feet, now we're going to twenty." That creates a non-conformance.
Right.
Which obviously wouldn't allow, be allowed in a special permit. So it'd have to be a variance, I think.
And it very well, it, and, and that, I think, is the important, uh, important take. The only, the only thought I had about the special permit approach was that if we, if we're, we're looking at it as the, as a, as a modification under that, under section fifty-four, as a modification of the pre-existing non-conformance, although it's with a different side. So if, you know, if, if, if the board is open and entertaining as a, as a variance, it's probably the more fitting as a, as a, as a, as a
I think to Brian's point
Relief.
That's
Yeah.
I mean, this
Yeah.
the hardship is they built the house, and then someone changed their frontage, whether, I mean, whatever the legal frontage should have been in nineteen fifty-eight, uh, the frontage was changed, so that, right there's a hardship, because it was imposed on them.
Right.
Clearly, that's where the addition should go, and, uh, certainly not going to affect the neighborhood at all by putting a small addition on like that, it's a wooded area. But I mean, variance seems reasonable to me, given that hardship.
And I think the board's setting a good example, using the variance as the adder, with the right relief, rather than set an example that we're using a, a modification of a pre-existing structure for a different side. Yeah.
Well, the, um, this is a very interesting one, actually.
Yeah.
The, uh, the property of the neighbor, who I think is number three, he, too, sits on what is referred to in this community as an ancient road. He has no access himself to Conifer. And somebody took it upon themselves to put a rail fence up in an area that should be designated as Conifer, because the driveway of the petitioner has, what appears to me, to be a marker in the driveway, as a boundary marker.
Mm-hmm.
God knows how long it's been there, I have no idea. But the other property, um, drove out to Conifer, came all the way up Conifer, and the property that sits behind this home, I haven't quite figured out what street that one's on.
Well, it's, 'cause it splits.
No, I got that, I got that. But that property as well seems to have been a, a mystery of how the development. But in any event, um, I have no problem with regard to this property being given a variance, because it's certainly nothing that the petitioners have brought upon themselves. And it's, uh, we'll probably never know who, who was responsible for this, uh, unusual design.
Ken?
I have no comments, other than I also spoke with that same lobster fisherman when I was out there, and so I can confirm that the neighbor, or at least that one, has no issue with the request.
No questions.
You didn't speak to the lobsterman?
I did not speak to the lobsterman.
You're the old man. He was pretty informative, too.
I guess, I guess I'm not convinced that this qualifies for a, uh, on a variance. I, there are, you know, they can move to the other side, which would be the west side, put their room there, they're gonna have to relocate their tank anyway, it's said so right on their, uh, their drawing here. I understand their concern, and I guess since Conifer Woods came in after the fact, my preference would be to declare the, I guess it would be what, the southeasterly line of front of the house, in which case, on the sideline, there'd only be a twenty-foot setback requirement, and we could grant a special permit for them to do what they want to do.
Right.
That would be my preference.
Alright, so, I see.
I think, because this is, this is a pretty unique case.
Yep.
And I just don't think they can meet the strictly legal requirement for a variance. On the other hand, I don't think it's fair to punish them, because of the circumstances that changed over time. No matter which way you look at it, whether it's that southeasterly line or the northeasterly line, neither one meets current requirements for a hundred-and-fifty feet of frontage on a road. So technically, they're, they're non-conforming on both sides. And I would rather look at the southeastally and say, you know, that's, that's their front line, or it was. In which case, on the east side of the property, instead of a twenty-five-foot setback, it's only, would be a twenty-foot requirement, and we could get away with a special permit. In fact, they, they don't really need anything, because they wouldn't be within the twenty feet, but I think, just to be safe, we ought to grant a special permit. That's my feeling. It ju- just, it's an odd situation, it's an odd case, as, uh, Al said. I think we should give them relief, though.
Yes, and, um, I don't, obviously, the variance would be the high relief, but that, that has, as you say, a higher standard. Um, I, I personally think they've, they've met that, um, but the, I can see what you're saying, this fact of granting a special permit, establishing as a, as a, as a frontage.
Right.
Now, are we allowed to deem that being a frontage? Is that, 'cause that's what you're saying?
Well, we're just, sure, we can s- declare that's the frontage, and I don't know if it has any legal bearing beyond the granting of a special permit. It's, it's non-conforming, we're not really affecting that, it's, um, existing non-conforming frontage, but that's not really an issue.
No, but we, we need to, if we're, if we're gonna go with a special permit, we need to be stating the fact that it's a opinion of the, the Board of Appeals, that the frontage is a southeasterly line of one hundred-and-twenty-seven-point-two-nine feet.
Yes.
We have to state that in the decision.
We would have to state that. My concern with the variance is there are other areas that would be within the, uh, the setbacks where they could put this addition. Now, it might not be as desirable to them, but the fact that it's not as desirable doesn't necessarily establish a hardship. I mean, theoretically, they could put the new addition right along the line of the existing house there on the east side, move it down however many feet it is there, I, it's not marked, but whatever it is, and then move it further rest. They, west, they'd have to relocate their front door, though.
No, okay, no, that's
So, as, to give them this layout, I would propose a special permit. And we just
And we
acknowledge that, um, for historical purposes, anyway, the frontage appears to have been this southerly, I'm gonna call it southerly line, southeasterly line.
When it was originally constructed, that was
When it was constructed, that appears to have been the frontage line.
Yeah, we, you and I are both, we're, we're saying the same thing.
Yes, I guess so.
We're saying the same thing. The question is whether or not, since that is the historical frontage, you know, somehow, the town called this, now the frontage on Conifer, has created a hardship. Or are we just gonna say, we're, we're declaring this as a frontage, and we're given a special permit?
Well, historical frontage. In existence when the house was constructed.
Okay, so we, based upon the records, we, we are, it's, it's the board's, the appeals board opinion that the historical frontage i- is as originally constructed, of a hundred-and-twenty-seven-point-two-nine feet, um, you know, in, in the south, southeast line of the property.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, so it's my feeling, I don't know how the other members feel about it.
Well, it's one of, yeah.
But I mean, I, I think, as you pointed out, that they should get relief. And as far as where they should put, they should be allowed to put on the build, put the building where they want it to be in relation to the house. And they could have done that until they built this road, so someone imposed a hardship on them by building a road that didn't exist when they originally built the initial layout of the house. They could have very easily have shifted the house over during the initial dis- construction, sent it in the lot, and, and been happy about that, and so to me, it is a hardship, but I, I'm, I'm good with either way, whatever's best for the applicant, I guess.
Do we know if it's a town road?
Yes.
The other one, no.
Conifer Woods, no.
Conifer Way? Conifer Way, it's a private road, it might not even be a town road.
Yeah. No, I don't No, it's, no, I checked it out. It, no, Conifer is considered a private way.
Yeah.
I went, I went to the planning board records and, um, checked it, and it's listed as a private way.
Okay, so that's
But the
It's not like the town imposed it, it's some kind of, maybe it was a deer path or Native American pa- no, I'm serious, it could have been. That's how a lot of these things in this town and other towns came about, they were
Well, that's how their, that's how their nineteen fifty-eight frontage came about, it's because it's an ancient road.
That's what I think we should say. That's why I think we should say it was a normal frontage when the house was built and proceed on a special permit basis.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna share that a, a special permit route could be unique, that it, it, it helps a future commissioner, too, when reviewing this property, to have, have it cited in one respect so that the same question wouldn't come up with the, with, with the future application for a building permit. So that's a, you're just trying to think long-term, beyond, beyond this, but a future, future commissioner looking at the same property.
Well, in a bottom line, just for the board, I think it would be a weak variance that I don't want to back.
No, I understand.
Against us by other petitioners and their attorneys, which they want to do.
Okay. Okay.
And my concern, actually, in the special permit, maybe that there'd be a future commissioner that would actually bring it against the person. What you are proposing is that would actually strengthen the hand because we've now changed the frontage in a special permit.
Correct. And by leaving it more of a narrow decision, that's, that, that then allows the application for the permit to go forward as in compliance-
Exactly.
-with the current setback requirements as a side, sideline setback.
Yes.
Understood.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to open the meeting up to a public comment, if there's, unless there's any other questions at the moment. Okay. Anybody in the public who would like to, to speak regarding this application?
I'll move to close the public hearing, seeing your board.
Okay. It's Chris. Okay, uh, Chair now entertain any further discussion of the application by the board? Oh, excuse me.
Hi.
Yeah, that was all, okay, approved. Thanks. Okay, any additional discussion about the application?
I do think if the board, um, feels that the special permit is appropriate, it does meet the requirements of the bylaw and the Gale and Geiger cases for a special permit, recognizing that with the historic frontage being the southeasterly line, it would only require a setback over on the east side. So it doesn't even need a special.
No, I think we should.
Yeah, no, no, I agree with you, because we're switching it around.
Exactly.
Yep.
Yep.
Just to cover the applicant.
Okay. Before I ask the clerk to make a motion, attorney, you're, you're fine with going forward with the special permit versus the variance?
Yes, it, it, it provides the relief, and then, and in looking at the plan, there's nothing adverse to the plan as presented that would be affected by it being treated as a, as, as historical frontage on the south side.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for checking.
But, um, I'd ask the, Al, clerk, if you could make a motion?
Um, case number 2023-09, David, Susan, Aitch, myself, through their attorney.
Matthew Fitzsimmons.
Matthew Fitzsimmons. They're the owners of the property located at 300 Wood Road, assess map, um, 25 parcel, N4 in the RM zoning district. The applicant has been, uh, given a special permit. Uh, this, this case does, these, excuse me. It should not be referred to as such. Their proposed project will intensify one or more existing, um, nonconformities, will not create a new nonconformity, and will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structures. All work will be performed in accordance with the plans submitted, uh, with the application. The, it's being noted by the board that the front of the property is a historical, um, situation where it is on an unnamed road. All right, during the life of this project, I don't think parking is gonna be a problem with this one. The, uh, during the life of the project, all construction vehicles shall be parked on, uh, the property and not on a public street. There's no public street there. Or road, in condition, it is a condition as approval that a violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL chapter 48, section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaws as these may be amended, uh, from time to time. Uh, just a point, maybe you'd like to thank your neighbor who was extremely helpful.
For s- for sure, yeah.
All right, I just want to make sure that, on the motion, we're indicating the fact that, that the board is, is basically considering granting that the historical frontage is on the southeasterly line of 197.29 feet, whatever. We want to make sure it's in the record, 127.29. 29 feet. And, um, and based upon that, we're granting a special permit to construct the addition, the setbacks, et cetera. Okay. All right, so it, um, we'll, um-
Was that, was that an amendment to Al's motion?
Yeah, um, it should be.
Okay.
Okay, the historical frontage is 100, again, Brian, what it is, 127.29 feet.
On the southeasterly line.
On the south facing portion of this property. And that is located on, as was noted previously, on historical, on ancient road. Can you cover it?
Yeah, what I may do is rewrite it up and pass those, make sure we get it accurate for the, for the secretary to type things up. Okay? That's a-
One second, Matt.
Okay. All right, uh, all those in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Okay. The, um, Scary.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the help. Thank you. Will do.
Brian, do you want any of these to stamp?
I already, so I already stamped them, yeah. Been stamping as I go along here. I'm getting, getting more organized at this.
Good for you.
Took me nine months, but I'm getting there. Okay, the, um, clerk would call the next case?
All right. Case number 2023-10, Mark Capella. Represented by Patriots Builders. As the owner of the property located at 91 Punkhorn Road, assess map 100, parcel 85, in the RM zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit to raise and replace a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaw 32554, and MGL chapter 48, section 6.
Good evening. Chris Childs from Patriot Builders.
Let me just, hold on a second, please. Thank you. All right. Regarding relevant notices by the town departments, the health department is requiring a fully compliant septic will be required, and complete septic applications be submitted to the billing permit sign, before, prior to billing permit sign. The, uh, voting on this case will be, uh, Al Doniu, Dave Nutley, Chris Murphy, David Ryer, and Kenneth Dixon. And, uh, I'd like to have the applicant represented induce themselves.
Chris Childs from Patriot Builders, on behalf of the applicants, Mark and Janice Caparella, who are also here with us. So we're proposing to demolish and replace an existing nonconforming single-family dwelling that's located within the required setback at 91 Punkhorn Road in Harwich. Uh, the existing structure is one-story, consisting of about 1,581 square feet of living space. The proposed structure is two stories, uh, which will have 2,872 square feet of living space. However, the footprint of the proposed structure is gonna be 1,584, so it's only slightly larger than the existing. It's almost in the exact identical footprint. It's just got a slight change in one of the jogs. So the, uh, the existing structure is, is located about three feet away from the 50-foot buffer from the, from Seymour Pond, and the deck extends beyond that 50-foot buffer. And we're proposing to move the structure back, uh, to the south and take the, take the whole thing, the structure and the deck, completely out of that 50-foot, uh, buffer zone. And what that does is, as a result, is on the west side, the setback will go from 9.6 feet to 10 feet. And the setback on the east side will go from 7.1 to 7.2 feet, uh, which is only a slight improvement. But I would just point out that on that east side, the 7.1 setback is from the building itself, from the house, whereas the proposed setback is now from the corner of the deck, not the house. And that, the, the actual house would be about, I'd say, around 10 feet away from that side setback line. So it's, it's more substantial improvement than, you know, than the numbers show. So based on that information, I am requesting that you issue the special permit, uh, that you find that the replacement structure will not be more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure, that the replacement structure will not cause or contribute to any undue nuisance, hazard, or congestion in the neighborhood, and that the replacement structure will not increase the nonconforming setback encroachments, and that the structure will reduce each of the two side setbacks. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, well, thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Okay, I'll ask members of board for their comments and questions. Ken?
I just note that the conservation commission also approved the raising and rebuilding of this.
Thank you, that's right.
And so I don't have any other questions.
David?
Uh, that's, is that a drinking water well, the existing well, or just for irrigation?
I believe that's a- Is that for potable water, the well? Is that just for-
Is it your drinking water?
Yeah, that's for, yes.
That's my only question. I, I think this meets the requirements for a special permit.
I, I would, I would agree, um, the, um, just out of curiosity, as far as access to the property, I went off of 130, um, 134.
124.
Went off 124. Is that how you access a property?
Correct.
Four-wheel drive?
It's tight.
You dump any dirt in the way in?
It's gonna be fun.
How big are your trucks?
We're gonna have to use small ones, small deliveries.
If they can clear.
Uh, actually, I have, I have no questions or comments on it. Al?
It's a minor comment. Is there any chance a house number could be put up on that, uh, post along with the other two homes?
I'm sorry?
The house number.
There is none.
There is none.
Oh, absolutely.
If for no other reason but a fire department.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
No questions?
Sure thing.
No questions, although I enjoyed the off-roading, so.
Thank you. It, uh, okay. The, um, I'd like to open the meeting up, uh, to the public. Is, ask anyone wishing to speak, to state their names and address, anyone in the public who would like to address this matter? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we, uh, close the public hearing.
Second.
Who seconded that? Chris? Okay. Any additional discussion by the board? Oh, excuse me, I, thank you very much. Vote on this. I'd like to vote on the motion. All are approved. Any additional discussion by the board? All right, the chair asks now for the motion on this case by the board.
Case number 2023-10, Mark Capella, through Patriots Builders. Are the owners of the property located at 91 Punkhorn Road, assess map 100, parcel 85, in the RM zoning district. The applicant has been issued a special permit, uh, to raise and replace pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard's 320, uh, bylaws 32554 and MGL 48, section 6. Is it, as the proposed project meets the Gale case, it will intensify one or more existing nonconformities and will not create a new nonconformities and will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structures. All work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted. My question to you is, where can you bring your vehicles? You're not gonna leave them up on that, on the road, are you?
Well, I think once we get the foundation, we can park right down in front of where the, you know, there's, there's, there's some area down there to park. We're just not gonna be able to have, you know, 20 people working at once.
The other question I'm gonna have for you is the demolition of the exterior of that building. When is most of that work gonna be done?
Midsummer, late summer.
It's a very congested area. All right, we know, uh, demolition or exterior construction or new landscaping during the period of June 30 through Labor Day of any year. During the life of the project, all construction vehicles shall be parked on the property and not on any public street or road. Uh, it is a condition of this approval that a violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL chapter 48, section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaw as these may be amended from time to time.
I would just, you know, and I apologize, I didn't discuss the, the amendments. We say not any public, public street or road. I'd like to amend that to say private road as well. Any public or private street or road in way. Just because it covers, it's, um, given the, given the nature of that road, should there be any kind of emergency during construction and so forth, this would be a real problem. And, and, um, I really think that the parking off-site, off the road, needs to be addressed, you know, you know, prior to, um, tying up that str- it can't be helped. And, and, and should, and should there be an emergency for any reason, and you've got trucks in that road, I think it, uh, I think this board needs to consider and address that, the fact that, you know, would that be considered? And, um, you know, actually, prior to us seconding or, or approving this motion, I, I wanna bring that back up to the board, how we wanna address that. Because the, I mean, those who went down there, and I did, and I, it was, I was going six miles an hour trying to get down that road, and then I had trouble, you know, finding the place. And, um, I don't believe this project should, should, construction should start on, as far as materials and so forth, even demolition, until adequate parking is established on the site.
Okay.
Well, the motion does require that all construction vehicles be parked on the site. So it's gonna be up to the, we've got the other condition, I mean, we can shut the project down if they don't comply. And how they do it, that's gonna be up to them. But it looks to me, looking at the, they're gonna have a proposed parking area, we're gonna relocate propane tanks. Out at the beginning, and they relocate it, and they'll open that up for construction vehicles. And maybe on the other side of the shed there, even if they have to scoop out some of that elevated temporarily to make room for additional vehicles. At the end of the project, they can fill that back in again. But that's really their issue.
And there is about 50 or 60 feet between the front of the new dwelling and the existing septic system. That propane tank is going to be relocated, but it's also gonna be taken out of the way- That propane tank is going to be relocated, but it's also gonna be taken out of the way during construction, so it won't be there. So there's definitely a decent... I mean, it certainly... It's certainly a challenge, but it's something that we'll make sure that we pay close attention to and not allow anybody to park up here on that gravel drive, or, you know, I guess it's up here, actually.
Yeah, I just... And bringing this up for everyone's safety and so forth, as well as not to be difficult, but... So prior to any demolition, trucks have to be on-site. We're going to be clearing the land...
Correct.
...to park the adequate construction vehicles, as well as demolition materials that are gonna be knocked down, and then eventually the housing materials be brought in.
Right.
Make sure it's all maintained on-site.
Correct.
I might point out, though, if there is a problem with the parking, the police and the fire will be all over you.
And will stop the project.
Will have the Building Commissioner shut down the project. So, you know, not trying to be difficult, but we've got to think of the neighbors and safety and everything else. We want you to have a good project, but, you know, we have to take care of the rest of the folks that might want to get down there.
Sure.
I'll second that motion.
I can comment that Thanksgiving, we had quite a crew there. We had seven vehicles and parking. There was no issue.
Well, no, that's excellent, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that it's just taken care of, and trucks are not, you know, parked for more than a moment on that road as they get into it.
Yeah, and I acknowledge that, you know, we're gonna have material on the site, too, which is gonna take up space, so we'll have to make sure that we, you know, prepare for that. And we have piles of lumber on the site that's gonna take us... Take away parking, but... And, you know, we'll have to address getting that material, you know, because the road is elevated, and then it goes down to this property, so we'll have to address all that, and I'll make sure that we do.
Okay. All right. So my amendment to the motion is to, first of all, regarding the life of the approved project, all construction vehicles be parked on the applicant's property and not on any public or private street, road, or way. Okay?
So I'll second that amended motion.
And we're indicating the fact that the project should not be taking place, you know, between June 30th and Labor Day.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay. All those in favor of the motion amended?
Aye.
Any additional discussion regarding the motion by anybody? All right. And I'd like to have a call for a vote for everyone regarding the motion.
We just did. We just did. He was talking about the private way. We just took a vote on that.
We just took a vote on the amended. I'm just gonna vote on the whole thing.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I thought it was the amended motion, but okay.
Okay, all right. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Well, maybe we voted on it twice. It's a double approval tonight, for the same price.
Enjoy your project.
Thanks very much.
Okay, Al, if you... If you read the next case?
Case number, excuse me, 2023-11, Michael F. Fitzwilliams, through Michael F. Fitzwilliams Trust, represented by Gabriel Panetta, 45, Lockwood Street, on Drive, rather, Dennis, the owner of the property located in 27 Pinewood Lane, Assessors Map, 4 Passele T1-31, in the RH1 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit to construct a deck within the setbacks of the pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the zoning bylaws 325-54, NGL Chapter 48, Section 6.
There were no issues that I'm aware of by any other department regarding this case.
No.
Okay. And I'm gonna have voting on this case, Al Donahue, myself, Chris Murphy, David Ryer, I'd like to have the applicant representative introduce themselves.
Good evening. My name is Gabriel Panetta, from G&amp;R Home Improvement. I'm representing Ms. Michelle Fitzwilliams regarding the rebuilding the deck of the... In the back of the house. It is a nonexisting, a nonconforming existing deck. It is... We're looking to build it on the same footprint. As it stands right now, it's in rough shape. It looks like it's static to detach from the house, so, you know, it's a structural issue as well. It look... It is encroaching in the side setback, being a corner lot by 11 feet, and on the side setback within 18.6 feet. So we're not looking to enlarge it or do anything special to it other than rebuild it.
Any questions? Are you actually starting with the board?
I guess, and this may be as much a question to the applicant as to the more senior board members, is reading between the lines here, so there was a permit in 1981 for a smaller deck. Looks like they built a larger deck in violation of zoning. Does that make it a pre-existing nonconforming issue since it happened after those zoning rules were put in place?
So if I could, just to... Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no. The owner actually... So I was told that if a structure is older than 10 years, and it can be proved that it's 10 years, it can be grandfathered in and be a nonconforming, pre-existing build, structure. The owner has records that the structure's been like that for at least 25, 30 years. So it hasn't been modified recently. It's been like that for a very long time, since she was a child. So I don't know if that answers in any way the question.
Sure, no, I understand. And I'm not... I'd have to... I believe part of it that might have been left out in that, I think, whether or not something was lawfully constructed. So if it had been, perhaps, it was lawfully constructed and is 10 years old, whatever, you know, it's still... So I'm a little gray on this, in that particular aspect of the building codes and law. I do want to kind of point out to fellow members of the board, I went down there with a tape measure, and the corner of the deck... So I'm bringing up, kind of, lay out a possible situation here that, another consideration for approval, from my viewpoint, okay? I mean, obviously, it's not our board's responsibility to try to prove a case, but I do want to throw some things out, which, because I do feel, I feel personally, that given the neighborhood, the house backyard, the fences, I mean, this deck being 43 inches further out than the side of the house, you know, the stair width...
Yes.
That intensification doesn't, in my opinion, you know, take the track from the neighborhood, okay? It really doesn't, right? But... So the corner of the deck at the stairs is 30 inches in height. Then another foot or two, it's 32 inches in height. And at the back corner of that same side, we're in discussion here, it's 38 inches height. Now, one of our codes is 325-18F. Was it F? Okay. Am I got the right code here? Hold on a second. Which basically is indicating the fact that projections into required yards or other required open spaces are permitted, subject to following. And item 2, F2, is open terrace or steps, stoop, or similar structure. Now, it doesn't exclude decks or structures attached to the house. Under four feet in height can be up to one-half the required yard setback. So if it's under four feet, and you've got a 20-odd... Now, when I say this, I'm not implying the fact that I'd be in favor of this deck going any further than it currently is.
Oh, we don't want to do it there, no?
But I'm trying to say the fact that, given that, and this interpretation has been used by other applicants as well, that it, based upon that, and given it's under four feet in height, I believe, should we be inclined to grant a special permit, we could point to that article in the zoning, that's showing the fact it's under four feet in height. Okay? And the... That's, yeah, 325-18F. So, yeah, so Howard's only... I actually wrote this out, I apologize. So Howard's zoning bylaw, 325-18, Section F, is ambiguous or not specific to the decks, which states open terrace, steps, etc., which I already stated. If the replacement deck area within the setback is limited to the similar length, similar depth and length of the stairs, with, I feel it would be reasonable to approve the construction as submitted based upon 325-18F of the Howard zoning code. So I just want to offer that up for my thoughts. Okay, since you... Since John brought that up regarding the nonconformity...
Again, I think like you, I'm not specifically opposed to this, I'm just worried about the...
I was trying to find a...
Right. The precedence of, oops, 10 years later, it's okay.
I'm okay with the project in search of a reason.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to find a code that... And I do think that does qualify. That's my opinion. But I want to hear from everybody in the board regarding that. Chris?
Like, the fact that it's been there for 25 years, replacing it, it's certainly not affecting and harming the neighborhood. The distance, the house... The deck was not there, is the house conforming on the back setback?
It is. The deck itself is 12 feet, and now we have 11, so it'd be 22 feet away from the property line. So it is, yes, but...
The originally as proposed deck, as it was not followed, it was permitted in 81, how big was that deck?
That deck was... This one is 20 feet by 12, and I believe that the original deck was 14 feet, so it was going towards the back of the property, two feet more. That's what was in the plans from the builder. So they built it smaller, and it was 43 shorter, so it was all the way to the edge of the house. So where the steps were on the side of the house, that's where it was added on.
They didn't go as deep?
Yes.
But they went further to the side?
Yes.
So the original plan is an existing nonconformity?
It is.
So we could approve it off the existing, at what should have been built, plan?
For the back, not necessarily the side.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, the side still is creating a new nonconformity, and that's why I was just raising 325-18F.
How... So the house, because of the 22 versus 18?
Yeah. The house is 22 feet, the deck is 18.
So it would create a nonconformity.
You got it. That's... And that's why I'm hanging my hat on...
It's a stairway.
Well, no, it's a structure that's under four feet. I mean, worst-case scenario, if it wasn't a... If you want to make a stairway, you drop it down a half a thing and go forward. But, I mean, that's how I look at it for using this code, as far as, again, and others here have more knowledge of this than I do, but hanging my hat on that as far as considering approval.
Now, the original deck was built 1981, presumed. So we technically do not know when this deck, given its current condition, which is extremely poor and dangerous. And as was described about, with regard to the property, there's a fence all the way around the property, and it is relatively secluded back there, where that deck is set up. Based upon what the chairman has said and entered into the record, I'm in agreement with regard to his viewpoint on this, that deck is not going to be any problem.
Ken?
No questions, no concerns.
Okay. David?
No.
Mr. Ryer?
Yeah, the only comment, I guess, is since we don't have a certified plan for the deck itself, we just make it a condition that the deck be constructed in the exact footprint of the existing deck, as shown on the Rider and Wilcox Plan dated, what, March 8, 2023? They said they were gonna do that, so that should not be an issue.
Probably a proposed deck to be constructed.
Yeah, in the exact footprint of the existing deck, as shown on the Rider and Wilcox Plan.
And I agree with you on your reasoning. Technically, I'm not sure they really needed to come before us, because it's under four foot height, and they can go with a half a setback, but since the Building Commissioner, you know, denied the permit, that's why...
Right.
We should give a relief of special permit. It's not gonna be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay.
May I ask a question? The four-foot height, is this an amendment just for Harwich, or is it a Massachusetts amendment? Because I'm not... I wasn't aware of it.
Harwich.
Harwich.
Harwich zoning by law.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you.
And it is limited, as the chairman said, to certain structures.
Yes.
They don't mention that, but they'll take it somewhere.
Yeah, no, no, good. Thank you. Okay. I can open up to the public meeting. Is there anyone in the... Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this? Hearing none, I would like to motion that we close the public hearing.
Aye. Seconded.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Any further discussion by the board? Okay, we will now entertain a motion by the, on the case by the clerk.
All right, case number 2023, excuse me, dash 11, Michael F. Williams, and through the trust of Michael F. Williams Living Trust, through Gabriel Panetta, 45 Lockwood Drive. The owner of the property is located, which is located at 27 Pinewood Lane, Assessors Map 4, Passeau T1-31 in the RH1 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit to construct a deck within the existing setback nonconforming, two-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws, G2554, MGL 48, Section 6. The property meets the Gale case, has proposed the project will intensify one or more existing nonconformities, will not create a new nonconformities, and will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than a pre-existing structures. All works will be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with the there will be no demolition, it's a relatively busy area down there, so there'll be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscaping during the period of June 30, to Labor Day of any year. And can you get your, your, your vehicles on that property?
Yes, we have a trailer, we did a project before there, and we were off the street. We have enough room to park in the driveway.
I'm just going to add this to it as well, just to be sure. During the life of the project, all construction vehicles shall be parked on the property and not on any public street. Also, the will be, it will be built according to the exact plans by Ry Wilcox. Through Ry Wilcox.
Well, you want to indicate, proposed deck should be constructed in the exact footprint of the existing deck?
Okay, exact footprint of the existing deck.
As shown on Ry Wilcox.
As shown on Ry Wilcox.
Dated 328-23. Sorry? Dated 328-23.
Yeah, the plan is dated 328 of '23. And that's the plan that shall be followed. I'll second that motion.
If I could just, because I don't, I don't know if we missed this or not, but but the granting is pursuant to Howard zoning bylaws, indicate 325-18F, which we refer to on this? That's one reason why we're giving this, because of the four foot scenario, or do we have to?
We, I don't think we have to, I mean, we, you can if you want to, but I don't think we have to. Why don't we just put it in the minutes, let the minutes show that?
Okay, all right, that'd be fine.
That we discussed that and agreed with that.
Okay, all right. Okay, David, second the motion. Any further discussion by the board? Okay. And, you know, also, I just, now I forgot who was, who was voting. Good thing I write these things down. Okay, all those in favor approving the project?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. It is approved.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Thank you.
If if the board's permission and so forth approval, I just take a, just a brief break, and I'm going to myself, I think we're going to take a five minute break here, and be back momentarily.
Really good.
Work or live in Connecticut?
I grew up in Connecticut, I tried to leave. Suck back in Derby, and I ended up working in Norwalk. And then I actually commuted to, I own an office in Five Pin Pots in New York City for about a dozen years. But my wife said enough moving, so we, we had, we had a house up here.
Yes, sir.
I guess your people have gone to 128, is that correct? To see the property, but, yeah, okay, I just had a picture of you've seen it currently.
I drive by it all the time.
I'm hoping we're not talking about detriments, but we're improving the neighborhood here now. Given what the property looked like a year ago when I bought it. Okay, thanks.
Is that an old sea captain's house?
Yeah, yeah.
When was it built?
1865, well, some of the town records say 1875, and some say 1865. Captain, Captain Ellis.
My daughter lives in Cheshire still. I actually drove up from there this morning. Go back and help the grandkids.
Am I, do you ever get your, my, our family best friends, they own the Vic House in Cheshire? It's like the, it's a restaurant bar.
Oh, okay, no, I, I know where that is, yeah. My daughter, if you're familiar, it's actually, he's on the zoning and select board, it's the the guy that owns Hitchcock Fuel and everything in Cheshire. My daughter bought his old house, which is a huge, I don't know how, well, I know how, because he was on the select board, but they did more things there than ever should have allowed it. But it's beautiful, it's beautiful, six acres, 6,000 square foot house.
Haven't we been to the Vic House?
You know where the castle is in Meriden?
Yes.
You drive at 691, so my daughter's house is like on the opposite hill.
Okay.
So as the sun rises over the castle, she sits there, her coffee, and just looks across the valley. It's a gorgeous property.
Has she always been in Connecticut, or?
She, actually, she was born when we lived in Germany. But, yeah, we moved, again, my wife, my career took me everywhere, and my wife after, when my daughter was about 10 years old said, I'm done moving.
We did about seven moves in
In 11 years.
How long have you been out here, full time?
Well, we had a house in Eastham since 2005. And then really just full time since COVID. Ken's old friends at Windpoint helped me with that decision. They're like, we're ready to sell, and I'm not ready to sell.
I miss it over there a lot.
You know, well, you were, I mean, Brick was a much nicer part of Connecticut, so I do, it's, it's just there's a, there's a great division of wealth there.
Yes.
Where I grew up. They haven't given up on the glory days, but honestly, there's, there's no
You know, when we were looking to buy, my wife's family still in New Hartford. And I'm just like, babe, look, I mean, look at the house we want to buy here, look at the house we can buy there. It was in the brain.
Well, that's why my daughter moved to Cheshire, because she was looking at buying the home that I had in the valley. The school systems had gotten so terrible, and the taxes, because they had no commercial base, had gotten so high, you're like, you can have half the house in not a greatest neighborhood, pay more taxes, and still have to send your kids to private school. And, you know, then this, she found this place in Cheshire, which is, you know, six acres, less taxes than what we were paying in the valley, and one of the top 10 school systems in the state.
That's what's happening with those towns, they're, you know, 60% of the kids in school.
Okay, we're back. Al's clerk, if you would call the
Case number 2023-12, Richard J. Thompson, to the trust of Richard J. Thompson Living Trust, care of, through Robert Ward, owning the property located 100 Route 28, Assessors Number 10, Passeau L5, in the Howard zoning bylaws of 32552, in MGL Chapter 48, Section 10.
The regarding relevant notices and Health Department, it cared of complete floor plan, the entire property shall be submitted with a building permit for a Health Department approval of expanded use. And voting on this, this case will be Al, myself, Dave, Chris, Dave Nunley, Chris Murphy, and David Ryer. I'd like to ask the applicant to represent and introduce themselves, and present your
Richard Thompson, the owner, and Bob Ward, my tenant and builder, and he lives in the house itself, and has done work on the property so far.
Okay, excellent.
Permitted and inspected.
So please present your, your case for variance.
So I'm Robert Ward of Bayside Building Remodel, representing property owner Richard Thompson. The matter before us here tonight is relief under the, the code of the town of Howard, under Subsect, Subsection 325-51, and also 52, where special permit for a two-family dwelling requires a lot size requirement of 40,000 square feet, and we have square feet, which is just a little more than 7,000 square feet shy of the 40,000 square foot requirements, so we're requesting a relief for variance for the lot size requirement for a two-family dwelling, which is the structure that is proposed is pre-existing, it's been there since 1974, attached to the Sea Captain's Home that was built in 1865, 1875, and it has an attached roof overhang. And the proposal is for the structure that's existing to make a separate two-family, separate housing apartment. So there was an original building permit applied for, and the building department approved it as an ADU, but it was actually applied for as a additional apartment. So then they had said, keep the permit, and then go to Plannin, and then Plannin had mentioned we needed a variance. So originally, we applied for special permit for the two-family, and then that was continued due to a variance being required because of lot size, it's under 40,000 square feet.
So you're saying you applied to the building, the planning board for a permit for multi-family?
Two-family.
For two-family. And then you were, they indicated to you that you need to go in front of the board here regarding the square footage, is that correct?
They gave us continuance to go before zoning and get a variance for the little bit smaller lot size.
So originally, the hearing was in March for Plannin, continued to May 9.
Yep.
Pending approval of a relief on a variance. There's the structure, the existing structure falls within all the setbacks. And we have presented with the remodel of the exterior of the home to represent the character of the town for that area, which is, update everything to mirror effect the Sea Captain's Home, with all the detailing of the windows, the detailing of the pediments on the windows and so forth, that are all visual from the office sides, from the front, the sides, to the Route 28. Whatever's seen from, you know, from that side, the sides in the front. So that's all been updated, windows, side and trim. All the structure's actually been updated already on the inside of the apartment, which was approved by the building department of due, but now we're, we're here to get the approval for the two-family, so it would be which I believe under the the code of the town of Howard, it's, it's allowed because the overhang of the there's a roof overhang that connects the two structures.
Right, correct, I mean, they are, they could be considered one single family, or this case, I guess you're looking for to be a two-family, but they are, they are attached.
Two-family, and they have separate utilities and so forth.
Plus, also in May of 2022, a new five-bedroom septic system was installed and approved by the board of health.
I saw that, it's very elaborate. Anything further?
No, that's, that basically sums it up. I mean, there's no encroachments, there's no change of character to the town on the structures, if anything, it's been approved, improved. And so I think we've done everything that we, has been required.
Okay. I do have an email from Ralph Diamond across the street and his wife, and they say we are in full support of your project and enjoy, are enjoying seeing all the beautiful improvements in landscape you're doing, best of luck. Ralph from Gale.
Very good, thank you. Let me open the questions, start off with, with John.
I don't really have a question other than on the parking, it looks like there's adequate parking, but how does
It's rated for 15 parking places.
They, they drive between the garage and the garage house?
Yeah, and that's all gravel parking area.
There's, I believe there's two or three parking spaces in the forward drive for the main forward structure of the Sea Captain's Home, and then there's an additional parking up back for 12 additional spots. I believe the total lot has been approved for 15 vehicles, which we wouldn't have probably never had 15 vehicles there ever anyhow, so. I like to keep it simple.
John, any further?
No.
Chris?
It's not clear to me, I mean, the ADU versus this, what's the difference?
Well, all right, first one, ADU, one question, what is the square footage of the first and second floor?
Of the proposed Wonder Admiral apartment?
Yes.
It's just a little bit under 1,000 square feet.
So combined, first, second floor is just a little bit under 1,000 square feet?
It is over the 800 square foot requirement.
I think it's 900, isn't it?
According to the code, it's 8, I believe.
But aren't I seeing 1,138 square feet in the apartment, on the outside?
I think the totals the total calculations that I have, but it actually comes under that, according to what the building permit had come back out with the deductions of them.
Because, you know, one, one of the roofs slopes down to the first floor, and there's knee walls built, so it really, the second floor really
Not necessarily the number, that's why I'm looking at your application.
Yeah, and it's, it's actually a little bit less than that on the building card that was approved. I think it was, I think it was 1,074, or something like that.
1,074?
Okay.
But I believe on the, for a two-family to be approved, you have to have a minimum of 800 square feet, or 900 square feet.
Okay, it is per the zoning regulations on, regarding ADU. On 325-14T, Item D, the accessory department apartment shall have a net floor area not exceeding half of the net floor area of the principal dwelling unit, which I don't know what that is, but and not more than 900 square feet. So if your main building where it, there's also there's also an issue on the ADU, and it pointed out the fact that the the main house on the ADU would have to be occupied by the owner, not by a tenant.
Say that again?
On an ADU, and now, correct, correct me if I'm wrong here, on an ADU, so you have two units, you have the main house, whatever, or, you know, the small house, but anyways, the, the main house has to be, one of the, one of the two
Got it.
apartments.
Has to be lived in by the main owner.
By the owner, they both cannot be rented out. So if, if, if you're living in the main house, then you can't go for an ADU for the garage.
And that's why we, that was picked up and we changed for, to apply for this.
Right, that's, that's the issue on that.
Yeah, I believe that was passed in, uh, twenty nineteen when the West Howard Special District zoning was rezoned. I think that's where that has a.
I've got a, yeah, it was down, it was passed May of six, two thousand nineteen. That's when that, um, the last time three twenty-five fourteen T got amended. So that's why they can't go for an ADU.
The full structure is not part of the apartment. Two-thirds of the first floor is a storage unit that goes with the main house. That's not part of the apartment. So it's, it's twelve-foot section on the first floor and then the, and then the.
Right, so, I mean, if you're going for an ADU, technically, this is under the nine hundred square feet.
Right, and we, we are not going for an ADU.
Right, yeah.
The question, so it's two-family, but it seems like it has the same problem as the ADUs that we've had before us, where it just doesn't meet that forty thousand square foot requirement.
Well, the ADU needs twenty thousand.
Depending on the zoning.
Depending on the zoning, okay.
Forty, the one we had recently was forty thousand, right?
It was twenty.
Was it twenty?
And they had twelve or thirteen thousand. There were thirteen, you know, that, that latest was around thirteen.
Again, that was a defining feature of it's.
Right.
We're changing use and adding a non-conformance.
Correct.
Right.
Anything further, Chris?
No, I mean, that's, to me, that's an issue.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
I have any questions?
All right, um, so like in another case here tonight, I'm in, I feel it's a good location for the second apartment for the two-family. I have no doubts in my mind, it's plenty of parking, the location. It's absolutely, I don't see where there'd be any detriment to the rest of the neighborhood, et cetera. So I find myself in search of a, I want to, you know, I'm, I'm leaning to saying yes in search of a, a code that gives me the authorization to approve.
Is there, if, if someone builds a two-family, uh, structure, are they limited to a thousand square feet?
No, 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 they're limited to, they're, they're not limited at all.
Okay, so that's.
The square footage has nothing to do with it.
Okay.
The issue, the issue at hand here is you're looking for a variance.
Oh, right, right, from the total.
From the total square footage.
On the lot size requirement, yeah.
Correct, okay. Now, um, I, based upon the board says here tonight and rest of the discussion, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring up another item a little later, but on a variance, section forty-eight, section ten states that to grant a variance, a zoning board must find that owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, or topography of the land or structures, and especially affecting such land or structure, but not affecting generally the, the zoning district which is located. So basically, the desire relief must be granted without, you need to be able to establish a hardship as to why, at least from my viewpoint, why we should be granting a variance for you to be able to do a multi-family, uh, you know, a two-family on less than forty thousand square feet. Like, for instance, for some reason, it's some, after your property once was forty thousand one foot and the state took away land by eminent domain and reduced the size of your, of your lot, okay? That, that, something like that could, could be considered like a hardship. Just, just tossing it out, it's probably a, a poor example, but, so for a variance, for that request, I'm in search of what, what the hardship is that, that gives us a pathway of approving this since it's under forty thousand square feet. So I kind of want you to think about that.
Yeah, one of the, one of the warrants on the, on the, um, at the town meeting is eliminating those requirements of, of square footage. For ADUs, and I don't know about, about the.
Yes, they're requiring, they're eliminating that require, regarding an ADU, which, because you're not occupying the main house or one of the two units, you know, you don't have to be the main unit, you'd be one of the, the own, since the ownership is not in one of the two units, then a two-family is, I mean, an ADU would not be approved. Yes, they're eliminating the square footage for an ADU. It still then would be up to, um, the zoning board based upon detriment of the neighborhood, et cetera. You know, looking at how they're gonna handle setbacks, whether or not it got approved. But they're eliminating the square footage and they're increasing the size of the lot. I mean, excuse me, they're increasing the square footage of the ADU up to a thousand square feet, okay?
Okay, how about this? The town of Harwich is searching desperately for more housing.
Yes.
And it's a hardship of the town to have this perfect opportunity to have another housing unit and for a small, uh, detail saying, we can't do it.
I mean, maybe personally, I want to, we'll work with you folks and see what we can accomplish here, but I just wanted to state, state the obstacles that I see at the moment, okay? Ken?
Is the existing dwelling a historic structure?
Yes.
And you're recreating the historic nature of this building as well?
Yes.
I've got, we saw the.
Yeah, you see, yeah, it matches.
I don't know if it's actually considered, it's not in a, it's not a really historic zone. It's a, it's special, it's a special district. Does that still fall under the historic zones?
It's not, yeah, it's not in the historic zone.
But just the, or just in, primary existing dwellings over a hundred, so that would fall into the historical.
I don't know whether or not you need to seek permission by the historic.
No.
No, we're, we're.
They did not require that at all.
And all the work has been done internally? You're, you're here just for, it's done.
Well, the structure was upgraded. We haven't finished it yet.
We have not.
No, there's no wiring, plumbing, sheet rock, nothing, nothing interior.
I'm looking for ways, okay? I'm done questioning, thanks.
Uh, well, we were, uh, we were given verbal that, go ahead, upgrade the structure, which we did.
Sure, 'cause you're not, you, at that point, you're not applying for a special, you weren't applying for a multi, a two-family.
I, it, on my original application said one-bedroom apartment. It did not say ADU.
Well, it doesn't either way, it's.
Oh.
So you were, you originally applied for a building permit to update the structure?
For a one-bedroom apartment.
For a one-bedroom apartment and you were given an approval?
From Jack May, yes. And he said, go ahead, do the upgrade and then apply for the special permit in the meantime. And we'll revise the building card to a two-family once you get approved. However.
When, when did you apply for the special permit? I mean, you applied for the building permit?
I don't have the building card with me. It's in my other file. It was, uh, January, I believe. Yes.
So you applied for.
Yeah, I don't have that with me.
A permit to update the facility and on the permit, you indicated it's gonna be for one bedroom apartment?
On the application, and he actually wrote ADU. And I called him on that. He says it's not an ADU.
Okay.
So this is where we ended up.
Sure, no, I, I understand, just.
From the planning board and.
Every bit of information is helpful here, folks.
Yeah, and then, um, I mean, the hardship would be is just really that with seven thousand square feet shy of forty thousand square feet and there's a dire need of housing, um.
And you spent a lot of money already on it.
I understand.
And I, I really don't know if there's any state eminent domain affronteries that was taken over that would.
I just threw that out as an example of a hardship, which was just off the wall.
On the left and right and the back, the back is conservation owned by other parties in the back. So I, the only thing I can think of is.
Could I ask the, section three twenty-five dash one fifty-three, which does the permitted uses for the West Harwich District, does outline two-family dwellings?
It does not.
It does.
It does, yeah.
As a permitted use, and it also.
Right, it shows it as a, it is on a special permit, which is, which has to be approved by the planning board.
But under the one fifty-nine, under review standards, it says the minimum lot size shall be twenty thousand square feet.
Where are you at, John? Where are you on?
That whole section starts with, uh, three twenty-five dash one forty-nine, the West Harwich Special District.
Three twenty-five dash one forty-nine.
All right. Like I said, if you go to one fifty-three, it shows permitted uses. And you got about a hundred percent sure of this law, but then under one fifty-nine review standards, the minimum lot size is twenty thousand.
Right? One forty-eight, one forty-nine, one forty-nine, right?
One, four-nine or five-nine?
Four-nine.
One four-nine.
This comes right after article, Roman numeral.
Article twenty, it's on the, article twenty-four, you mean?
Right.
Says added, West Howard Special District, West Howard Special. This is a West Howard Special District.
Yes.
It is, yes.
It does define historical structures, which I don't think this is one of them. And then it goes on to define the permitted uses.
Yeah, multi-family retail sales. All right, where do we get to any type of?
And if you get to review standards, one fifty-nine.
Yeah, but look at one fifty-four. One fifty-four says, there are covered special permits for multi-family.
Right.
Through the planning board, not through us.
Right, the planning board sent, and I know the planning board sent, sent them here.
Variants, that's why they're here.
Right, 'cause they, the planning board said they need forty thousand square feet.
My question is, do we need a, are they misinterpreting it? Is a variance required?
A little more volume, John.
I said, I'm, I'm questioning whether a variance is required, given the provisions that were already approved when they created the district.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to find the square footage in here, though.
They would have to go to the planning board to get.
So, so.
Our special permit, that's what this says, one fifty-four.
All right, okay, here we go. Review standards, three twenty-five, one fifty-nine, A three, uh, A four, minimum lot size shall be twenty thousand square feet. All right, that's, all right.
But I'm not, again, I'm not sure that that a hundred percent relates to.
Well, I don't think these, I don't think these apply to this board. These are the, uh, planning boards.
Okay.
Requirements. They're here for a variance. I can't tell from the map whether they're even in the West Harwich Special District.
The application was, was written down that it, it is in that district.
It is, yes, it is. It's in the Seacaptain's Rose of West Howard Special District.
Our, our, our particular map there, I mean, I mean, you need to bring a bigger map to a meeting, but.
I agree with you, David, what I'm just proposing is maybe a variance is not what's required here.
Well, then they'd have to, got a continuance or withdraw, whatever they want, and go before the planning board to see how they make out down there. These provisions, oh, okay, yep, thank you. These provisions that we were just looking at there, that's the purview of the planning board.
So anyways, a twenty thousand square feet on that thing, that refers to any lot in that district. It's not necessarily applying that it's multi, you know, for two-family. David, I, I, well, did you, you're the, Mr. Ryer?
I guess my problem is somewhat Brian's, but it's not, it just, well, you're asking for a variance. That's governed not by the Harwich bylaws, but by the state general laws. And the state says for variance, your problem has to relate to either the soil conditions, shape, topography of the land or structures. And I don't see that any of that applies to your case. It's not, it's not the soil condition, shape, topography of either the land or structures that are preventing you from getting your permit. It's that your lot's too small. You don't have forty thousand square feet, right?
Correct.
And then there's a separate question of there's gotta be a substantial hardship. And I'm having difficulty with that too, because you're using the existing dwelling. You could use the existing garage as a garage without a need for anything. And you're, you wanna have an additional financial benefit and being able to rent it, but that's not a basis under the case law for a hardship. The fact that you could get a greater return for your property and by not getting the variance, you lose it. That's not justification for hardship variance.
It's really not the monetarily thing that we're trying to present. It's the housing need more than anything else, 'cause there are other structures that we can create housing for in the back that are, that were built for that aspect.
If, if you were able to convert the, uh, existing garage into a one-bedroomed apartment, would you then rent both the existing dwelling and the garage? So you'd have two rental units or just gonna rent one of them?
Well, I'm, I'm the, Richard Thompson is the property owner, I'm the tenant. So I rent from him, and then the other unit would probably be rented as well.
Rented, okay.
And then I also rent the carriage house for business.
Is there not, even under, if the town passes the, the town is proposing.
Yeah, it doesn't work.
Then the ADU statute's going next week, I guess, May first, the town meeting. And then if it's approved, it'll go off to, uh, the attorney general or a look see.
But this isn't.
Qualify under that either.
No.
No, this is, wouldn't be ADU sec. So under the, the West Howard Special District, the lot size requirement for a two-family or a multi-family?
No, no, for a single family, no, for any, any lot, it, it's twenty thousand square feet. But for a two-family, as I, as I read it, you wouldn't qualify for it under, 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 under the district code, special district code, because, um, even though it's allowed, this, you know, you can have a single family on a twenty thousand square foot lot.
Yeah.
But it, but it still comes under the board, uh, uh, planning board to approve a forty thousand square foot lot.
So what, when he was referring to that, that there was something that he found under section one fifty-four, was it?
Yeah, it's, one fifty, three twenty-five, three twenty-five, one fifty-nine, and it's, it's, uh, review standards, dimension requirements, does require, does allow a lot, 'cause it, you know, and under that district, you can have, you can, you can have all types of uses, you know, which includes single family, as well as two-family, whatever.
Okay.
But for a two-family, it then would revert back to the planning board, which the code and town shows forty thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Okay, now, let me just kind of add something here and, and, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend we do a continuance, and, and here's why, okay? Given the fact that this board, given the fact the town, I, I asked, I asked the, uh, did some research this today, or the last couple of days at the town hall. There had been other projects, one which came in front of this board, uh, but not for square footage, but for setbacks, which were on lots under forty thousand square feet, that the town approved a multi-family. And I asked the planning board director, I was there attending his office. I was asking him, what was the code you referred to when you approved that project? And I asked that of the secretary. And the opinion was, they hadn't considered it. They didn't think. It was like, like it was something in motion. And the code issue under three twenty-five, fifty, fifty, no, whatever, fifteen.
Fifty-four?
Three twenty-five.
And is this strict or?
No, 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 under the.
Four fifty-four. Three twenty-five fifty-four, special. They've got no authority under that, but that's not.
Fifty-one N?
Strictly. Five, five, three fifteen N.
Yeah.
Under three fifteen N, three twenty-five, fifteen N.
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one N, excuse me, that. Let me just pull it out here, it indicates. That for, for, for a two-family, it contains a minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet. So. Where I was. First toured your site, toured your site and so forth, and I was, I was up there more than once. I thought it was a great location for a two-family, and then. Going back over the case, realizing for a variance, so, okay, that needs hardship, this should be a special, I mean, couldn't find a special permit, then I realized that. This may not have been the only case in, in town, where something has been under forty thousand square feet that got approved. So I requested assistance from other departments as to why, you know, a particular project got approved. Uh, and what code was referred to on the approval. And, um, there are people in that department that are new to the department, that weren't there when the ball got rolling in this particular project. So they were like saying. Started before I got here, and, and no one was aware of the, of the code as to why it was approved.
Okay, so the question I have.
So I'm, I'm looking, I'm suggesting a continuance for both the applicant and the board to seek. You know, opinions from other departments in town as to how we can approach this. So the town also has a favorable opportunity of creating another housing unit.
I know, I mean, everything you read in the paper, more housing, more housing.
I understand.
Well, there's several, there are several lots along that road that have.
I, I, I just can't, unfortunately, there isn't a code three twenty-five, sixty-two A that says, sounds like a good idea.
Right, I understand.
You know, go ahead and approve it, all right? If that code was there, I mean, we'd, we'd have, you know, we want to be able to do the right thing. Now, the other thing, um, and it's not for anybody on the bus and so forth, I just want to be able to look at how. Approvals were granted regarding going forward on some reconstruction. Okay, so it, it, go ahead.
I think we need an opinion of counsel as to whether the Board of Appeals has any authority to deal with two-family or multi-family under our bylaw.
Well, that's, that's.
I'm not sure we can even grant a variance, I don't know.
I, I think, I think actually if it's a hardship, we could grant a variance for square footage.
I don't know.
Because, because we're not being asked, we're not being asked to, to grant a, a use, we're not being asked to say, go, go ahead and build your two-family. We're not being asked that question.
We sure are.
We're, no, we're, no, we're being asked to establish whether or not to, to, uh, uh. Planning board still has to grant them approval for a two-family, we are only saying that, it's okay, planning board, we're saying, uh, giving you a variance that they don't, they meet the forty thousand square feet, but, for a multi-family, but we're not granting approval of a two-family. We're just saying.
Well, in effect, we are.
Well, we're laying the groundwork for it, that's why the planning board wanted, wanted them to appear in front of us first, and the next step is after we say, under forty thousand square feet's okay, the planning board can then make a determination whether or not they want to grant. The, the multi, the, the two-family. That's how I, how I look at it. I just.
So my question, backing up, was the annual town meeting on the first is for ADU.
Has nothing to do with this case.
For ADU lot size requirements only, not other lot size.
It doesn't change, no, nothing, nothing, doesn't change anything, just for ADUs.
Yeah, so that's, that's.
Already stated why you don't qualify for an ADU, because.
So there would be another thing down the road for a new special town meeting, or town meeting at another time where.
Well, they're not going to change, I, I, there won't be, it was strictly, because there are other requirements for an ADU, other than the size of the lot, okay, the setbacks, so things that come into play.
Yeah.
Okay, that are involved, okay?
It is, I, I still don't think we have jurisdiction, if you look at section ten. The perma-granting authority that, in this case, us, will have the power of the public hearing to grant a variance. On the terms of the zoning bylaw, where such perma-granting authority specifically finds that owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, or topography, and then so on and so forth. This doesn't relate to any of those, this relates to square footage.
Well, no, but the question here is, they, they asked for a variance, the relief on the square footage, and they have not been able to establish hardship, so.
No, they can't establish that the lack of square footage relates to soil conditions.
That's right, they can't.
Well, okay.
They can't.
Separate from hardship.
We.
There are three tests they have to.
That's, that's actually, you're right, you're right.
There are three tests they have to meet, the first one is soil condition, shape, topography, the second is substantial hardship, and the third is no substantial detriment.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a three-pronged thing.
That's true, you have to.
The first one, so I don't think, since this is just a square footage issue, we have authority to act, I think it's strictly the planning board.
Would, would it have any relationship that part of the property is in wetlands, and part of the property borders other wetlands, conservation land, so there's, there's a. The hundred-foot line comes substantially into the.
Square footage is still in there, it's.
I don't think so.
Square footage is still there.
I, I wouldn't think it would.
Setbacks, it could, maybe, maybe that'd be a hardship for setbacks, but not.
No, we're, we're within the setbacks all around.
And it's not that condition which is affecting your shortfall on the square footage.
I'm looking for any.
Yeah, I know, I, I understand you.
So are we, actually.
Yeah.
We're kind of hemmed in, I, I don't think we have authority.
Oh, well, no, I, I.
It's, it's just a square footage issue.
It was the same as that one on Kingwood, right, it was a square footage issue, as much as.
That's why I was suggesting a special permit, I don't think they qualify for a variance either, which I had stated.
Would this qualify for a special permit?
No, because it's, um. Tied up with, uh, it's, it's a multi-family.
It's strictly a planning board.
To make it a two-family.
That's changing use.
But the ADU was the same. The ADU requirement, because. But, but the, the ADU case had the same issue, they wanted to put an ADU, but they didn't meet the minimum requirements on square footage, property square footage.
Which goes away, that part of it.
Not, not, not as, yeah, it might get voted in.
Right, if it gets voted.
They, they did.
No, they, no, no, they're continuants.
Okay, they got a continuance.
That was the same, it's the same problem.
And I was going to argue, they were not entitled to relief on that one either.
And I agree, yeah, yeah.
Unfortunately. And, and I understand we need more housing, and I'm all for it, but the town, for whatever reason, has put these restrictions in, and there's still some restrictions in the new ADU if it's passed, minimal, but the towns not. None of the towns up here want to go carte blanche, they want to more units, but they want a controlled additional unit development, I guess is how to put it.
Right.
Right, if I could?
Oh, absolutely.
You know, Dave, you've oftentimes talked about precedence, we have to be careful what we do, because it sets precedence, I mean, I would tell the applicant, it sounds to me like potentially, based on what you've learned, that the planning board has already set a precedent to approve properties for two families of less than forty thousand square feet. This body can't help you with that, we didn't set that precedent.
Yeah, we were sent here to do that here.
Understand that.
I, I understand, and it's, 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 it, uh.
And also building.
I had discussed with, with the representative of the planning board the fact, like. I don't know why we have this, okay, totally, but, but also, I also wasn't, did not see whether there was an opportunity to, where you met any, any part of the. The code for establishing a, a variance, okay?
So at this point, we would be requiring a continuance per?
So in case, and I think David's point is well-taken, the fact that, that, given the fact that there's. You know, it's a square footage issue. You know, where, that this board is in fact probably not. In line to make any determination at all whatsoever, and this should be back on the planning board, so I'm just, I'm suggesting we do a continuance, not a withdrawal, do a continuance, so in case. We find whether it's the attorney. You know, says, yeah, you can go forward, and here's how you could, you could approach an approval. Okay, or here's what a proper application would look like.
This is the town attorney?
Yeah, the town attorney.
And, and that's something you would discuss with him?
With her, yes, I mean, we would, we would, you know, so, but, um, my recommendation is we don't make the request of the town attorney yet, until we determine, talking to other departments as to, you know. You know, what are our options here? And now, because one case in town got approved for more than, for multi-family under forty thousand square feet, there definitely could have been other circumstances, code, locations, et cetera. You know, that, that came into play. That aren't, and, and, and actually, any, anytime you have a case like that. Any, any ruling that we do here doesn't, doesn't set a precedent up, because each case has to be on individual, so, you know, you, we can't come and say, you have to approve us because you approve them. Right, each, each individual, and we don't, we, though we do have patents in which we say, this is what we typically do, this is what generally happens, so we do have our own sort of, kind of like. You know, presence, how we handle the certain things, but it isn't a right of an, of an applicant to say, to say the precedent, okay? Did I state that okay?
Yes.
Okay, so, so my, my recommendation is, is that I have a form here that I guess both sign. Requesting a continuance. And we'll continue it to the next meeting to start off with, actually, just to continue the next meeting.
I, I do have one other question before we, before it's wrapped up, so when you say total square footage of a lot, also including conservation?
Your lot lines, if it's, if it's in, if it's gone into.
So if there was lot one A, lot one B, combined together.
If they're one lot.
Lot one B is still part of it, that'd still be one lot, because there's conservation on the back of that that possibly.
If, wait, if you have a lot, lot one, and there's lot two, and they're separately deeded. You can't approach us as being one, one lot, until you, you, one, until you've gone through the mechanism of combining the lots.
Okay, but that would.
If you can come up with seven thousand square feet.
Still fall under that, though, like, it was like wetlands rather, not conservation.
I believe, and I would consult with people that, before you went out and bought land, I would, I would consult.
Well, just to increase the lot size, just to.
So with some attorney that understood, understood everything, because there can be circumstances that I'm not aware of, that combining the lots doesn't mean you have the right to use a whole square footage. But that being the case, it would seem reasonable to me if you were able to buy seven thousand square feet adjacent property, and combine it to your lot, then you would have forty thousand square feet.
That's where I'm coming from.
Right, but don't do that on. Our recommendation, this is.
No, no, I was just, I was just saying that.
You need to get a legal, I would get a legal opinion of where we look at.
I would suggest you consult a lawyer.
Yeah, well, that, I mean, that's like, like another option down the road, if there's like, you know, we got to find a hardship here, is what we got to do on, but we need a continuance.
That's the only thing a hardship is, I don't think, I don't think you're going to find a hardship that, that this board is going to recognize, because. It's, there's no outside influences. Which have, which have taken away seven thousand square feet.
No, that's not I consider.
All right, I mean, there's, whatever, all right, um, there's no, there's no, you got nice land there, you know, you, you have setbacks, your, your current buildings have good setbacks, there's, there's no. You know, the variance probably isn't going to be the answer, but, hey, there are attorneys out there that, or, or people out there that are smarter than me, that may show, show the path. I'm just telling you that, uh, I recommend a continuance.
If all else fails, seeing they're connected, could we just finish it as living space as a one-family house?
Yes. I believe this board would, and matter of fact, I don't believe you have to come in front of us, because I think your setbacks.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just throwing that out real quick, I had to look back at the setbacks, but I don't believe there's a, an issue.
There's no.
Making it.
Yeah, it's all twenty-four feet and plus is the, twenty-four something is the closest driveway side to the house, and, and, and the, uh, the building we're talking about is almost right in the middle of that three-quarters of an acre, so.
Yeah, that's another.
No setback.
I, I, I don't believe there's any, any issues.
What was the question again?
If they just decided to make it. One family, and, and that, and just add additional.
Living space.
Habitable space to that main house.
But they're still changing the garage into habitable space.
Exactly.
But it's a test.
But you still need a special permit, it'll be approved, but you would need a special permit, like happened earlier tonight.
Well, yeah, I realize that, but it's, there's, there's no, I don't believe there's a reason why it would be.
No, it wouldn't be a problem.
And that'll be in front of Jonah for that.
Be in front of us, I think, okay.
Boy, you approved all the other ones we thought we were.
There's always a hiccup somewhere, no, I.
We're the ones to get.
No, it's okay, no, I do this. So that would probably be another alternative, which probably be a lot.
Make it one, a single one-bedroom, I mean, excuse me, one-family unit.
An extended one-family is basically what it is. I mean, you can have.
But you can't have two people paying rent.
No.
No, what I'm getting at is, you can have an additional kitchen, you can have an additional bathroom, because it's a bigger space.
As long as you mean border health requirements, which you.
We've already met that, yeah.
Right.
Can't have a second kitchen, can you?
Huh?
Can you have a second kitchen?
Yeah. Yeah, as long as it's a, yeah, you can. I, I believe that's, 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 you know, it would be approved, so.
So what, the other question is if we have to revert back to a single family, it's just a completely new application?
No, if you continue it, that's why.
That's why you want to continue it.
You suggested you won't have to refile, you won't have to pay a filing fee a second time.
It'd just be revised to a one, oversized one-family.
Revised plans. Show whatever you decide to do finally.
Well, the plans, I think, are.
I would like, if you're going to come back on that theory, a plan that shows the connection between the house and the proposed garage conversion, I'd like to see what that, on a regular, you know, plan, what that looks like. The roof that connects the two of them.
Oh, on a, on a regular architectural drawing, you mean, rather than the, the certified plot plan that shows it?
Getting late, I'm getting tired, but yes, an architectural plan, so we can.
It shows the connection of the main structure to the, with the overhang, okay, I can do that with SketchUp, that's easy enough to do.
Yeah, I would like to see a plan showing that.
Okay.
Might be, though, you might have to go back to the Department of Health, because if it's going to be one structure now, there might be different requirements on the bathroom. The number of baths. As you're converting it from however, how many baths in the existing dwelling?
Uh, there is two, two and a half.
Okay, so you're going to add another, so you, you've got.
Another one and a half.
They're okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be like a common bath on the first floor, and then a full bathroom, second.
Total number that would look at from.
Yeah.
Aren't they more concerned with bedrooms than bathrooms?
I think it's bathrooms that there's a restriction on.
Um, I think they'll look at both, but I, I don't know, you'd have to go back and talk to them, any of them.
Okay.
Yeah, they, that was required anyways, but, but I believe the system you put in is probably maybe sufficient, but you need to go, Dave's absolutely right.
It's.
It's designed five bedrooms.
The septic is a five-bedroom septic system, so it's more than sufficient flow and leaching capacity, um, and then in five years, we'll be hooked up to sewer possibly, maybe?
Something else needs to get through.
So, um, a couple of things to kind of wrap things up here.
Yeah.
We never brought this to open meeting, did we?
No.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to make a motion. That, that we continue. This meeting, and I signed an agreement with Richard Thompson. this meeting, and I signed an agreement with Richard Thompson, an agreement for continuance. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. So, Thompson, you have your sign this form?
Continue it to the next meeting?
We're gonna continue it to the next meeting.
You want me to read it in?
Yeah, continue to the next meeting, and I'm gonna have still to do the agreement form that you'd have up to one hundred and eighty days, no sense, you know? We would also continue it from the next meeting as well, if we're, if we don't resolve issues prior to it.
Right, right.
So, if you could, as petitioner, you just want to read this, just real quick, just in case, exactly, we're continuing the meeting. You can sign it here. And I'll, I'll have the Secretary for Architecture copy this, so you have a few records, okay?
Okay.
I'm gonna have her take care of that, I'll be... We'll get there, all right?
I hope so.
We'll work on it.
So, now, the question is whether it's off the record or not. So, say, discard it.
Well, we're on the record, but go ahead.
Okay. So, the, if it was having to go to the, convert it to an extended, what, a...
Big house.
Single family, yeah. Then, at that point, if it was sold, and then, now it can be, now there's an opportunity to have an ADU. Does the ADU have to be connected to the main structure?
No.
Because, see, he's gonna buy the property from me, you know, maybe in, in less than a year. Then it wouldn't be a problem, because he would live in this thing, and the ADU, it would be...
Well, there's a separate structure out back, that's another two thousand square feet.
Let me just look, I don't think we, I don't think that was proposed to be changed.
Whether or not that...
No, that was not, that was not changed.
Whether or not the ADU has to be connected to the home.
No, it can be, no, detached.
Okay, so then that, in that instance, then, okay, all right.
Also, and again, I, I think you need to do more research, and I agree with continuing it, but if you look at the footnotes on the forty thousand square foot, footnote in the zoning table says forty thousand square feet is required for vacant lots, where they're talking about multifamily. For lawfully pre-existing structures used converted to multifamily residence, the existing lot size shall be allowable.
Oh, wait a minute, that's...
Oh, let's...
Okay.
What are you looking at, John? I still think it's planning board purview, but if you go to...
Guy comes in out of the bullpen, saves the day. All right, so what?
At the very back, three twenty-five, attachment two.
Reggie Jackson.
Table two, area regulations.
Table two?
Table two.
Area regulations.
All the way to the end, where it says multifamily, all districts were permitted by special use permit. On forty thousand square foot, there's a footnote four, and that footnote four is what I just read to you.
Which is?
Says forty thousand square feet is required for vacant lots. For lawfully pre-existing structures used converting to multifamily residence, the existing lot size shall be allowable.
And this is under the West Howard's Code, I mean, the Town Howard's Code or the Mass Code?
Uh, the Town Howard's Code.
Okay, we're, okay. And I got, you know what, when I was looking back at Dave...
And that, under, under what section?
Uh, it's in the table.
Oh, it's on the table, okay. Table two, area regulations, special use permit, forty thousand square foot, vacant.
That's, that's said, number four.
For us, for us pre-existing.
Oh, okay.
So, I'm just trying to find this. All right, I don't, John, can you come down and show me?
Yeah. It's all the way to the end of the table.
We're on three twenty-five, attachment two point two, right?
Right. It's got a couple pages of that table, I think it's here.
Oh, wait a minute, okay.
So, it says multifamily housing, all districts were permitted by special use permit.
I missed one fifty-nine, and I missed the table.
Then on the forty thousand, there's a footnote four.
Maybe reduced pursuant...
No, the, down there, forty, forty thousand square feet.
Required for vacant lots, for lawfully pre-existing structures used converting to multifamily residence, the existing lot size shall be allowable.
But again, I think all this refers back to the planning.
They don't go to planning board, and it has nothing to do with us.
Right. Yeah.
So, this is planning.
You're back to planning, and I think, I feel very, I feel very positive, highly hopeful, you're gonna, you're gonna be in good shape. And I do believe, and, and, and when I looked over the notes on that other property that we, we recently did, on the application, there was a, there was a note which I didn't understand, the planning that referred to a four. And, and...
What you have to look at, gentlemen, is you have to look at table two, area regulations.
Yep.
That's what you want to look at.
Special use permit.
Right at the very last...
Oh, thank you.
Can I have this, or are you...
Do you have an extra copy of that?
I'll make a copy of it.
Oh, okay. All right.
Wow.
Okay.
We're trying here, folks.
We appreciate it. We're trying to do a good deed, you know?
I said that, it's planned, it's still planned.
Long-term, long-term housing, I have no interest in, in short-term rentals, I've done that for years, and...
No, because there was an item on that, it noted, it noted four, and I wasn't quite understanding it, but the people who were, I talked to, weren't around when that was first done.
But that's probably where it came from, hopefully.
Yeah, that's where it came from.
And so, if they have to approve it, then you don't have to approve it, because...
Yeah, we're not gonna, you know, I mean...
You don't need a variance.
You wouldn't be involved.
No.
You're a nice guy, but we don't have to see each other again, I don't think.
Oh, so this would also apply to a building out back, but I would need a variance for the one out back, because that's within thirteen feet of a corner.
Well, good luck. No, okay.
Good luck.
But seriously...
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Boy, thank you, thank you.
I live right around the corner from you, so I've...
Oh, where, where?
Studied a lot about the, the zone.
So, you've been watching what we've been doing. I mean, it's...
Well, John's, uh, I will tomorrow educate the planning board regarding, uh, what...
I think the big one is coming up soon, next door, because they were filming it today, the...
The old restaurant?
It's gonna be coming up within the next year, year and a half, that it's probably gonna get presented.
Bishop's Tavern?
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Really needs to be torn down, unfortunately.
It's what an eyesore that is, you know? That's on one side, the fabric center is on the other side.
People that were doing the preservation, currency cap, I think it's in the process of being purchased, so...
So... Right. But I don't think that's any kind of motion we're putting in the minutes.
Okay.
Oh, wait, wait a minute. Actually, it is in the minutes, but I don't think we're making a part of the...
All right.
The, we're not making a motion. Or do we make a motion that the chair informs? No.
No, I don't think so.
I just bring to his attention, and then I think, we continued it, and, um, I will, I will have spoken to planning.
We're, we're going there, nine, the May ninth, we have a, a date with the planning board.
Right. They'll be, I'll, I will go over this with them prior to that.
Okay, great.
So, they're, they're aware of the, what we discovered, okay? And you, you may hear from Paul Halcotis, who's the planning director.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll point this out to him. You know, he's, he's new on board, so a lot of his little notes and codes, it's not, you know, it's, it takes experience, and someone who's got an eagle eye that studies this stuff, and thank you, John.
Yeah, and they've been encouraging so far, when they...
Well, absolutely, no, the town is, and I think this is a great location for it.
It really is. And I think that, I think there's gonna be a lot of, over the next five years, that road is really gonna come along with...
Or when they redo the road, and sidewalks, and the green spaces.
Has that been, has that been passed?
No.
No.
It's not completely passed, it's through its preliminary stages, so...
Two, yeah.
Another couple of years.
In June is the final hearing and approval, uh, there, the money's there and everything.
That's, that's approved from the state, correct?
The state has it.
Oh, God.
I think that's part of it, Daniel Tomina, too, is money for infrastructure for the water and dry sewer line, too. Which would be wonderful if that happens, it's gonna help a lot of people out.
Well, a successful conclusion, all right?
It's just been a social occasion rather than a legal one. Okay, thank you very much.
My pleasure. We, oh, wait a minute, oh, yes, we have to write in the fact that it's, we continue.
Okay, case number twenty twenty-three dash twelve, Richard J. Thompson, trustee for Richard J. Thompson Living Trust, through Robert Ward, Fort Passilla Road, Orleans. The property, owner of the property located one hundred, roof twenty-eight, assesses map ten, parcel one point five, and R M and C H one, zoning district. The applicant seeks a, the case has been continued to May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, I've got a handful of items, and we'll try to rip through this as quickly as possible, guys.
Dave, don't look so enthusiastic.
Trying to stay awake.
That was a good catch, though, John.
That was a great catch.
Good catch. But this board has never looked at multifamily, because we have no jurisdiction.
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent, it's planning, but I, you know, I think like we talked about with the ADUs, I, you know, I read through that whole special district thing, they're trying to revitalize it, trying to, to allow separate uses. But then it seems like, you know, you read the accessory little details and everything, you're like, well, how's anybody actually gonna do that?
Right. It was a good find, too.
It was a great find. Okay. All right, so you were all sent, and also here tonight, a copy of the minutes from March twenty-ninth. And do we have any, any corrections?
Yes. On case, well, the fourteen Atlantic Street case, she did not put in the conditions. I had recommended before, I don't know if it was Shayla or Richard, but when they do the minutes, they should just take out of, you know, copy, or you do cut and paste, copy our decision, paste that in, not try to recast it, just put the whole doggone thing in, it would save them a lot of time, you know what I'm saying? Because she's already got the, the decisions done, you've signed them. All she has to do is cut that out, or copy it, actually, not cut it, copy it, paste it right in at the end of the, the narrative, as the, the motion that was made and passed, or, you know, have all our conditions, have the exact wording, and we'll enhance our position if we're sued. If I might, does anybody receive, other than me, did not receive the Butters information? We generally receive...
Yeah, I didn't get any of those.
In a packet.
Well, yeah, I didn't see it. I didn't get any Butters.
I was looking for it, I didn't see any of them in our packet.
What was it?
A Butters information, that was one of the pages.
Usually, there's a map of the Butters and names.
The location of the property.
We've gotten that for quite a while.
We haven't gotten this, so they went to online applications.
I, I can't get into Excel anymore. Maybe it's me, but I've given up. Uh, we also don't get the, in half the cases, the commission, building commissioners rejection letter.
Hey, I've been getting that.
Not in all cases, at least I didn't.
Not in all cases, yeah. I would say the minority.
Okay. Well, I'll address that. All right, besides, good catching that, Dave, any, any other comments regarding the minutes? All right, so with that, would that change, would that change to the minutes update? I'd like to recommend that we, like, most, we approve the minutes with the inclusions which Dave brought up, if I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, so I have a continuance agreement for ten, ten Kings Row, that's been signed by the attorney, Brian Wall, and that will take us for, to include, you know, one hundred and eighty days from, from April twelfth, for the continuation of that, of that meeting, okay?
Seven till October.
Right. I'd like to just make a motion that we, that the chair be approved to sign this continuance?
So moved.
Second.
All right, so first is Ken and Chris. I actually should be signing this as of the twelfth, can I put my today's date on it, it doesn't really matter? All right, he signed it the twelfth, I don't...
Yeah, you can put today's date. We should also vote that we approve the motion.
Yeah. All right, all those in favor of the continuance?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I have a general question, is Joe Beasley not on the board anymore?
Okay, yeah, real quick, I was getting into that.
I'm sorry.
Joe moved out of town. And so, Joe, you know, has resigned as of April first, he's no longer with the board.
Still got, we still got Tim, though.
Still have Tim. Now, Tim's, I think it was item two, and I did send him a, an, an email, Tim's, I believe, he said his papa, which I believe that might mean his grandfather, passed away on Tuesday, or Monday. So, he's not at today's meeting because of obviously death in family. So, if you, those who know Tim and so forth, reach out and, you know, let them know your condolences on his, his family's loss, okay? Probably send him an email, whatever, but just wanted to point out that he did, he did indicate in an email to me that he lost his papa. And I, I do believe that means perhaps his grandfather.
All right.
Okay. Somehow I just misplaced my minutes, but no big deal. I mean, I mean, like, I mean, the agenda.
That's right in front of you.
Oh, thank you, appreciate it, right in, right in front of me. Thank you, John, you're really coming through for us tonight. Okay. All right. Okay. I don't believe, did I? We talked about that presentation that we did last year with, with Amy Kizwell regarding forty, forty B. So, I think as you actually go through that recording online, those that have it, this is actually her slideshow. So, I'm gonna pass that down.
You got it?
These were the slides that, that she used that night, regarding your forty B presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, you might, yeah, those who are on the board at that point may have that, I don't know if they were at that meeting, Chris, or not, okay? No, I, it's, it's, keep it for, you know, all right, the, those that... All right, so you got, I think you guys have it, I sent that, at least an email out regarding the forty B handbook for everybody. I think those who were there last year, you already have one of these, perhaps. Just because when I read through it, I go nuts trying to remember all the abbreviations. This is an abbreviation review of all the, like, D H C D, which is the Department of Housing and Community Development. So, you read through it, you see these abbreviations for, for committees and... Like DHCD, which is Department of Housing and Community Development, so you read through it, you see these abbreviations for, for committees and state, state government agencies and so forth. Or things like P E L for project eligibility letter, so, so that's a review of all the abbreviations that are in that book. So, um, I think those who requested a, a physical copy of it got it, is that correct? Okay.
I didn't get it.
Okay. There's another one? Okay, do you need else need one? Okay, you got the book, okay, good, so we're all set there? All right. Boy, we're just ripping through this.
Can't wait.
All right, so, um. In, in discussions with Paul Halcotis, who's the planning director, and, and Jack McGee, me, who was our building commissioner. At some point, they're gonna wanna probably have us, and I think we do as well, a, a meeting, so we can discuss, and it has to be a public meeting, we have to post it and so forth, and. We may do it separately from our, our regular meeting, cause it, you know, to go over zoning ambiguities, ambiguities, and other issues we have with the zoning code, code, and other clarifications. Now, on that, that case tonight regarding the deck, you know, um. Jack forwarded to the board, and he was aware of that, of that article, but felt that was like, this is an attached deck, perhaps this shouldn't be, you know, there's a qualify. He was on, you know, but he's, you know, little things here which are unclear sometimes, you have a lot of things in the code which are unclear. And also discussion regarding, uh, perhaps future new codes to, to put in front of the selectmen in town meeting to revise the, you know, zoning code. So they're both being very cooperative, uh, you know, and I think it's, we're in pretty good shape there for us. I've been able to rely on them for their input, sometimes on a, on a case as far as case law or whatever it might be, and, and they've been very helpful. And I think Paul, uh, who's been through major projects on forty Bs in the past, is gonna be helpful when we, when a case, when a forty B project does come up. Okay, so, it's, nothing's set right now, um, and, but it is, it is being discussed as far as how we might be able to get together, so as we. Now, at the last meeting, I did those handouts, which you all got, um, Ken, you asked me if there's gonna be a discussion about it, you know, we can, I know it's getting late now, but if there's, anyone's got any particular question, cause these things come up at every meeting regarding any, any of the, the items in those, those reviews that I passed out last month.
I think to that deck, which was sort of the core question for me of, of pre-existing, right? Pre-existing what? I'm still, you know, I think, just as here today, is it pre-existing, you know, the zone, the most recent zoning update, when the original zoning change was made? You know, I think non-conforming is pretty easy to define, but for me, you know, like, had, had that deck been over forty-eight inches tall, right? Then really it was a zoning violation, right?
It was not lawfully, it was not lawfully built.
So, you know, is it pre-existing to the nineteen seventy-two zoning? Is that what makes it pre-existing? Is it, you know, that, for me, I'm still not clear on, you know, for, even having read the material, and even in that same paragraph, there's, or section, there's paragraphs that say lawfully constructed, then there's paragraphs that just say constructed. You're like, okay, well, you know.
No, there's, there are things that you look at and say, okay, we, you know.
Yeah, why, why isn't the wording the same in two paragraphs that are right next to each other? But, you know.
When they say the deck is attached to the house.
Yeah.
Decks do not have to be attached to the house.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Solitudes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I pointed out, Jack, I mean.
That freestanding deck that's not.
And that particular code there doesn't mention the word deck, so it's like saying, deck's not mentioned.
Yeah.
You know, they're designed for, but even, I had a deck in a house that was only.
Yeah.
A foot off the ground, and it was, it was against the foundation, it wasn't, it wasn't attached, but it's, it's still considered a deck, not a, you know, another, another term for it. So it's hard, but anyways, they, they're being very, they're, they're working well together from what I can tell, and they both are looking forward to working well with the, with the zoning board. Okay. Anybody have any other items they want to discuss on the new business?
I know, I wanna get out of here too, but I do have a question regarding the wokosa thing, just cause I wasn't there, it was vacation.
The which thing?
The wokosa, the wokosa walkthrough.
Right.
Is that something like, was anything?
We shouldn't discuss that, cause it's.
So when.
Not before the board, no.
If it comes before, then at that point I say what was hap-, what happened on the walkthrough?
Yeah, I don't think we should discuss that.
Correct, and, and the, as I indicated in my email, I had a limited timeframe, and I was totally confused regarding that site. So I had given several dates out to the, you know, as far as quickly, um, regarding availability for, for a walkthrough, if they would do it. And, um, you know, cause I felt as, as the chair, if I didn't understand it, it wouldn't be helpful. You know, so, I, I wanted to get, make sure that I understood it. So, so in the future, you're gonna find, and I promise you the fact that I'll be more proactive regarding, well, in advance, to try to give dates up to everybody and say, okay, who can make what, and make sure we can get there. So that was a last-minute situation, and I, I apologize that it didn't come close to meeting, uh, people's schedules. So that's in the future, in time I have a brainstorm like that, discuss with the board and make sure we've got dates out there and try to, try to get a date established that everybody can, majority of the board can be there.
Jump at any time to get wokosa over there.
Okay, well, I thought it was a productive meeting tonight, I'd have a.
Well, I get, just very quickly.
Sure.
The only people that were involved were Al and I, the present board, but we were sued for a special permit we granted down on Braddock Street, down on the way, it's right off of, uh. What is that, Bank Street there, but, I don't know.
Bank Street, Beach.
Water Street. And very quickly, the, the guy had like a flag lot, he was back here, his two neighbors were here, he had an ease of him going back to his house. He was one-story, they had both started as one-story, they were two-story, the back guy wanted a special permit to go two-story, and it was granted, they sued. And the judge in, did what Attorney Crowell is always telling us, that we should be careful for. The test is, is it a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood? This judge looked at the two neighbors up front that were complaining as the neighborhood incorrectly, I think if the applicant appeals, I think he's gonna win.
Was that just recent?
Yeah. No, that, we, that's about four years.
It was five years ago, and it just finally.
Just came through?
Just came through last month.
Yeah.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, and I was shocked at the decision, but.
He also viewed privacy differently than we did.
He made a lot of decisions that weren't justified, yeah, he, he assumed that they changed the plans, well, it's a bed, bedroom, they now call it den, and he said, no, it's a bedroom, and. It, it was really not a well-reasoned decision in my opinion, and I think on appeal it'll be overturned, now whether the applicant wants to spend any more money, I don't know.
I'll, I'll send that case out to everybody, so you have it.
It was an interesting case, and, um, in my opinion, incorrectly decided, but. Basically, when we get sued, our position as a town and individuals, our lawyer files an appearance, and she'll do any kind of filings, but it's up to the applicant to run the case and spend the money. We just sit back and wait and see what happens. So I just wanted to mention, it was kind of an interesting, um, appeal, an, an interesting court case that we lost, and our special permit was vacated by this judge, a lower court trial judge, where was it? Superior Court, Barnstable. So, those happen.
It only took five years.
Yeah. You know, it would be an interesting case for your doctor or your lawyer.
Yeah, so, that's all I, I just.
I'll, um.
I thought it was not worth mentioning.
I'll, I'll pass that case out to everybody, so I'd like to, I can entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Chris.
Second.
Aye.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries.